All right, I think we're all here so we can call the meeting order at 6:03 PM. At this point, I'm going to open the floor to citizens comments. I'll give it two minutes. Anyone wants to raise their hand and have an opportunity to speak will give you the floor for three minutes. Plus give some chance for some people to come in. Give it just another minute. Thanks, Michelle. So we will have the Hamilton border selection meeting with us at 6:30 tonight. All right, um, at this point, why do we get right into the meat of things? Excuse me. First thing up on our agenda tonight is FY21 budget discussions and decisions. Excuse me. Um, I think I think it's sort of important to discuss that the negotiations committee actually had a meeting scheduled for this afternoon that got canceled. Excuse me. Always to sort of further, you know, complicates. You know, it's hard trying to make these decisions when we don't know exactly where we stand, where we stand. And I think that's something that's really critical to 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 keep pointing out here is that, you know, that the reason these developing going on discussions been going on so long is because we want to make sure that we're acting with the most knowledge that we could possibly attain. You know, the waiting for feedback from the state and sometimes it's conflicting reports and sometimes it's no reports at all. You know, so that's sort of how we got here. I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Kuchenberger and Vinnie to sort of lead us into larger discussion as a border. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Good evening. Vinnie and I have created a slide deck for you just to kind of remind you where we've been. Update you on where we are and then also prepare you to be able to make some decisions about where we're going in terms of the budget that will be presented at town meeting this Saturday in Hamilton at the high school athletic fields. And then also prepare voters for the work that they will do at the ballot box on June 25th and make any adjustments along the way leading up to the Wenham town meeting, which is now scheduled for July 11th location and time to be determined. So tonight, we're going to walk you through the FY20 forecast update. We gave you a forecast not too long ago, but as we all know, things have been very different than what we could have possibly predicted over the last three months. And so we have a new forecast for you and some ideas of how to respond, how to best financially support our COVID-19 response in terms of technology and safety supplies. We will then walk you through the decision, the the impact of the decision that was made by the school committee on May 27th with the reduction of 1.274 million to our local state aid. And we have the corresponding reductions that we've been discussing now for about a month to consider tonight. Today is the day that you will need to make a lot of really important decisions. And Vinnie and I just want to start by reminding everyone how difficult not only the last three months have been transitioning what we do in person to a complete remote learning environment. It's been a ton of effort and time by our staff. They've been working harder than ever to make this transition. And it's really pretty remarkable when we sit back and reflect on how quickly we were able to do that. I also want to just acknowledge the many, many difficult conversations that have had to happen in the weeks leading up to preparing this presentation for you all tonight and for your consideration tonight. We've had difficult conversations with staff who are very important to us and who have made incredible contributions to our school district. But obviously, there's only so many ways to reduce the budget by $1.3 million and some positions have been impacted by that. We have prepared four motions for you that will be available for you to either use as written or we can adjust on the fly. If any changes needed need to be made to the budget documents that have been presented and shared with you on Monday. We will ask for a small recess just so that Vinnie and I can accurately calculate those numbers and then come back to public session to make any final decisions if there are changes or adjustments to what we've prepared. So with that, we'll jump right in. I want to thank Vinnie for his countless hours preparing these documents and rerunning the numbers for me and recalculating the spreadsheet for me probably a million times since November when we started the budget process. But he always does a great job and I'm honored to have him tonight as my co presenter.
So, hi, everyone. Just to give everyone who's listening out there a brief overview. We started FY20 with a projected deficit of approximately $600,000. Through the hard work of our teaching staff, our TAs, our office personnel, principals and administration, we were able to curtail funding throughout the fiscal year. We delayed hiring in some instances and found very unique ways to teach our students while keeping expenses to a minimum. But this is really not sustainable and was only meant as a one-time fix to close the budget gap this year. And we were able to do that throughout September through right before about around February, we were able to close that gap to nearly $100,000. But then, as everyone knows, COVID-19 occurred and we ultimately had to close the schools and entered into a remote learning setting. Ultimately, through this closure, the district was able to conserve approximately an additional $500,000. Just lost the presentation, but I'll keep going.
Give me a second. Vinnie, my email is popping up. Also, can you mute the audio? Oh, you did. Okay. On your other device there. All right, let me get that screen back for all of you.
Use hear and echo.
It was initially, yeah. Okay, never without a Zoom glitch.
So we were able to conserve about an addition approximate $500,000 through the closure. So reviewing the DESI chart of accounts here. You can see that we're showing an approximate $550,000, but one thing we need to keep into consideration is we are realizing a revenue reduction in our Medicaid reimbursements. We are approximately $140,000 shy from budget to actual. In June, we usually receive a lump sum payment. This has not happened yet and we haven't got word on the exact amount yet. So taking that into consideration, if that does does not happen, we are realizing an approximate $400,000 savings when you factor in our expenses and our revenue reduction.
Vinnie, is that Medicaid thing a timing issue or do you think that it really is? That we're not going to get the $140,000?
I believe we're going to get some of it, but I don't think we're going to get anywhere near the $140,000. There is a lot of changes in Medicaid this year and a lot of expenses are no longer reimbursable. So we are definitely going to realize a reduction and we also factored this in for our FY21 budget as well. So they're just the next slide there. So just to highlight some of the big cost drivers. This is not inclusive to the closing. This is just kind of a comprehensive list of the changes that have occurred since our last forecast to this one. So as you all know, being in a remote learning setting, there's no need for substitutes. So we are seeing a huge savings in our substitutes line. In addition to that, there was a lot of PD that we did not end up using throughout the fiscal year. We had a few resignations that occurred between the months of February and March. And again, due to the remote learning setting, we did not need to fill these positions. Again, resulting in savings for the district. Without students in the classroom, we, there was a lot of supplies and materials that we ended up not purchasing. In addition, we saw a reduction in our special ed contracted services. There was no transportation occurring, so we renegotiated our bus contracts and we realized the savings there as well. Our utilities, we are seeing a small savings through our utilities as the buildings aren't being used. There's no water flowing. A lot of the lights are shut off, so we are realizing some savings there. And towards the end of the year, we, every fiscal year, we close out our federal grants. So between the months of March and April, we closed out all of our FY19 remaining grants and utilized all of our FY20 grants. And then lastly, through the hard work of the special ed department over April vacation, especially Elaine Rogel, she she worked hard during the break. We applied for circuit breaker extraordinary relief and we were granted an additional payment of $130,000 that must be utilized this year. So those are just kind of the big cost drivers on what what has changed the budget so far this year. But as you all know, COVID-19 doesn't always produce cost savings. There are two items specifically that have increased, one of them being our cafeteria workers, but the other one is our PP and E. So currently it's been projected that we're going to need anywhere between 250 and I believe $350,000 in PP and E for next year. And none of this is built into our FY21 budgets. So right now, if if we are mandated, we're most likely mandated to to purchase these supplies. There is no funding currently in our FY21 budget to cover this.
And I'll just add that the guidance that came from the commissioner on June 5th did direct us to purchase a 12-week supply of a variety of safety supplies, including masks, gowns, face shields, foot coverings, gloves. We also have to dispose of waste in a different way. And I believe the the cost estimates for that are about $138,000 for just a 12-week supply. Which Vinnie will talk more about.
So really because of the of the COVID-19 unforeseen expenses where I'm kind of recommending that we try to utilize our remaining balance this year. And one of the ways we can do this is to prepay our FY21 out-of-district tuitions. So the under MGL Chapter 71 and Chapter 40, a school district is allowed to prepay up to three months worth of private school tuitions and up to one year worth of collaborative tuitions. This way, if we utilize our FY20 remaining funds, we would not have to increase our FY21 budget to purchase these supplies and materials. We would simply free up whatever remaining balance is left this year, next year, and then throughout the year do a budget transfer to move the funds from our out-of-district tuitions line to our PP and E line. I believe this is the cleanest way to give us some protection for next year because we really, we really don't know what it's going to look like. And if we have to procure that much in PP and E, the the money has to come from somewhere, obviously, and we would not recommend cutting any more out of our FY21 budget as it as it seems bleak already. So this would be one way to kind of help us out next year.
Vinnie, can I ask if we were to receive federal funds to cover or even state funds to cover PPE? How would that play into our budget?
Yep. So I would recommend that we obviously utilize the federal funds or state funds first. And if it is enough to cover our PP and E, we would simply return any unused funds at the end of the year. So if the federal government was kind enough to give it to us, we simply just would not use the tuition money that we kind of opened up for us next year.
That tuition money could be used for anything next year, right? Or the the savings would create, you know, money that could be used for anything. It's not necessarily earmarked just for tuition or just for PPE, correct?
So the way the budget is set up, it is it is technically earmarked for tuitions, but you would just have to kind of approve a budget transfer from tuitions to whatever we need at the time.
And this isn't new, right? You've actually done this at other points in the past, if I'm correct?
Correct. I came here in FY13, I believe, was the first year we stopped doing it. So the last year, I believe, was FY12. And I believe we did it almost every year before that, for as long as budget sense has been around, at least.
Vinnie, is that estimate of the $350,000 for PPE, is that for the entire year or just for the 12 weeks?
That's for the entire year. Believe the 12 weeks was around 125,000. If I have my numbers correct. If you just want to move one more, Julie. Yep, don't worry.
The other item that is also an unexpected COVID response is technology, which we'll talk a little bit about as we work through the slides.
I believe I touched this one, so we'll just keep going.
I promise I only have one child. I just, she makes a lot of noise. That's joyful noise and enjoy.
We all have multiple ones and it's.
So just to kind of backtrack, this was the original February 12th budget that we you approved with our operating expenses coming in at an increase of 9.57% and our net operating budget coming in at 8.5%.
But as we know, shortly after that February decision was made, we, a lot of things happened. We went out on March 13th. Was our first day that we were not in school. We didn't know at the time how long the closure would last. We thought maybe two weeks, maybe a month. However, here we are three, three months later and just wrapping up the school year yesterday. But one of the things that we've been learning is that there is a possibility that the FY20 local state aid could be used. I'm sorry, that the FY, the FY20 local state aid we know is safe for this year. The state is borrowing money to cover the gaps related to COVID response across the Commonwealth. There are, they are still projecting. I think the numbers I hear are different every day, but even up to $6 billion in revenue shortfall across the state. And there's lots of concern about what will happen next year in terms of the local state aid. And so that comes in three forms for us. That's Chapter 70, Circuit Breaker, which is special education reimbursement and then regional transportation. However, this prediction keeps changing daily. I've heard a number of times in the past week that there's a chance that Chapter 70 might be level funded. And so when we look at the next slide, I'll tell you what that means for us. So when we learned back in May that there was a possibility of a reduction in local state aid, the guidance we were given at the time was to prepare for a 20% reduction. And that was really based on the average of what's happened in the last two economic downturns. So for Hamilton-Wenham, 20% reduction in Chapter 70 is 996,000. If that was to be level funded, that would mean that we would not have, so this number, our current Chapter 70 number includes the Student Opportunity Act money, which we were scheduled to receive about 195,000, I believe, Vinnie. If I'm correct. And then also every year we get about $30 per student increase in Chapter 70. So that's a total of about $300,000. So if they were to level fund it, the difference would be about $700,000. Circuit Breaker, 20% reduction is 194,000 and change. Transportation is about 83,000. So our total was 1.274 million less in state aid projections. And that's what we have been preparing for over the past month. On Wednesday, you all decided to vote to reduce the operating budget by that 1.274 million. And we've been working over the last several weeks to figure out what that might mean.
So just from a high level perspective, that one, the reduction of 1.274 million, you can see here, it ultimately results in a reduction of approximately 3 and 1/3% off of our operating expenses. And to reduce that, we had to reduce our expense offsets. The $194,000 reduction you see there is our circuit breaker number and the revenue reduction of approximately 1.079 million is both Chapter 70 and transportation added together. The net result being a $0 increase to our net operating budget. So we did not ask the the towns or any other revenue sources to to come up with this. It was a reduction right off expenses, right off of our operating budget for a net result of no change.
So as we prepared to think about where the reductions would come from, we've used these three guiding questions to assess the implications of every single decision. We've often talked at the leadership team level and even with, you know, some of our teachers about, you know, this this space that we're in is really trying to make the best of worst decisions. You've heard me say many times that these aren't recommendations, they're more considerations because these are not in normal times, we wouldn't be making these recommendations at all. They all have immediate and potential long-term impacts on our students and our programming and the services we provide. But the three questions were, number one, given our current context, what are the staffing supports that our students are students are going to need most when we return to school, whatever that may look like? We know that every single student in America is experiencing a traumatic event. And so are the adults that surround these students, thinking about our staff, our leadership, our families and our students, what supports will be most needed? The second thing to consider is how can we protect and preserve the classroom? We know that those connections with classroom teachers have been so essential throughout the closure. Students love seeing their their teachers through the screen on Zoom. Obviously prefer that in person and we want to be able to respond to whatever learning might look like moving forward by keeping as many classroom teachers as we possibly can. And then third, how will we keep equity at the forefront of each decision? Everyone is experiencing this traumatic event in different ways and everyone will need a unique response. With that being said, we have to think a lot about access to education. How do we ensure that all of our students have the tools that they need? And the staff that they need in an equitable manner, which isn't always necessarily equal. So as we return to school, the one thing that we do know is that school will look different or as we prepare for returning to school, we need to be really responsive to whatever might be happening with the virus and with our community when it comes time to welcome our students and staff back to school. One of the things that we know for sure, whether it's a hybrid option, a completely in-person or a completely in-person option, or some mix of a variety of things, there is some likelihood that we would flow in and out of in-person and remote, depending on how the virus behaves and how well how well we all do over the next year or so. So we know we're going to need safety supplies formerly known as PPE. The Department of Ed is calling it safety supplies. So just to make sure we have the same vernacular. We did cost out, our Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operation did cost out for us a 12-week supply, which is what the guidance recommends that we procure as soon as possible. And that would cost us about $138,000. We are taking advantage of the power purchasing agreement that the state has also put together. Doesn't give us huge discounts, but it makes sure that we will be able to procure these things because as you know, there are supply chain issues with safety supplies. Particularly as every single school across the country is trying to purchase these items and have them on hand. We have already placed a small order to partially fill that 12-week expectation so that we can have safety supplies on hand for our extended school year, which right now we're planning to begin some in-person service provision for our most vulnerable students as soon as July 13th. Another thing we need to think about in terms of equity and access for all students is transitioning to one-to-one technology. So as a district, we are currently one-to-one at the high school, thanks to the contributions of our families who participate in an iPad leasing program at the high school. Or they choose to bring their own device. Given our already, we have a very small IT team that is, you know, small but mighty and they do a fantastic job of supporting our students, staff and family. However, moving forward, we need to ensure that we have devices that that we can put in every single student's hand. And that really is whether we're in person or remote or some hybrid in between. Obviously, there's hygiene concerns, health concerns if students are sharing devices in the way that we used to. We typically would have iPad carts or Chromebook carts that would travel between classrooms. Could be in one classroom, you know, in the beginning part of the day and in another classroom later on in the day. That's not going to be possible. That's not going to be safe for our students and our staff. So we are talking about plans to get to one-to-one. We did receive some CARES Act funds that we will use to purchase devices. It's about $60,000. We also will reallocate some of our FY21 funding earmarked for device replacement or refresh. But there's still about $158,000 gap that we would need to close in order to be able to fully achieve a one-to-one situation with for our students. And really, you know, some people are wondering why go one-to-one now? This isn't something we budgeted for. The the issue that we have now is even when we have really amazing teachers, if students don't get, can't see their teachers, if they don't have access to their teachers because they're at home or the teacher maybe is in another part of the school. They're they're not going to get the same quality of education. And so there's, there's lots of reasons for us to go one-to-one at this point. It basically has become a core part of our instructional program in this remote environment. And we need to be able to make sure there's consistent access for all students. Of course, we're also thinking about what physical barriers or desk shields will we need? We know that we have to have a separate quarantine space in the school, separate from the nurse's office, if a student or staff member does become sick. So we have to think about what does that room need to look like? What materials and supplies will be needed for that? Lunch supervision will look really different, right? Because kids are not going to be gathering in large groups. We know that part of the guidance is going to be restricting movement and minimizing density of students. So that there could be some additional costs for that transportation. Again, we're not, busing is not going to look the same. We don't have the specifics of that yet, but we know that students will need to be spaced out and/or even possibly have staggered staggered start times. Cleaning supplies, obviously, not only things to to disinfect, but to sanitize throughout the day, hand washing supplies, things like that. Signage and floor marking so that we can control the flows of traffic and ensure that we're making the school environment as safe as possible. And possibly additional furniture to accommodate physical distancing. One of the things we know is going to be recommended is that students are six feet apart as much as possible throughout the day. So in terms of this, we talked about this before, there's, there's the estimate for the supplies and the guidance is linked in the agenda as well, which we'll share this out after after the meeting. And then this is just more details about that one-to-one response that we're talking about. We would be redeploying our, all of our existing devices in order to control the cost. And that was, that's what helps us get to this about $158 gap that is remaining. And I know there's some creative ways that we can close that gap in collaboration with our municipal governments moving forward.
So this is the new DESI chart of accounts based on the So this is the new DESI chart of accounts based on the 1.274 million dollar reduction as previously presented without any change. You can see some of the biggest difference here is the reduction in instructional leadership category and the reduction teachers. You will also notice there is an increase in our insurance, retirement and other line. This is due to the massive amount of unemployment liability that we are going to potentially see from the reduction of the 22 staff members here. So this is how it would look on the new DESI chart of accounts. I've added the three columns off to the right that show the change from the February budget compared to the May budget and the reduction of the state aid. Overall, it puts us at about a 5.9% increase compared to our 9.8 before, I believe.
And so what we've done, just to organize, because this is a lot of information to take in. And we know that for some members of the community, they might be just joining the conversation. What Vinnie and I have prepared on the next few slides is we're going to take it sort of slice by slice, category by category, highlight the change and then show you the positions or the impact, if you will, to the reductions that are proposed. And the implications are there, but this is all information that you all have seen over the last several weeks. We've just organized it a little differently for the presentation tonight.
I'm just looking real quick. The FTE numbers on this are slightly different than the ones I was looking at this morning. I just know because I plugged them into the one sheet. Oh, this says February 12th. Okay, never mind. I think I answered my own question. So I think the one I saw today was February 17th. And so the FTEs were a little bit not as round. Let's just say that.
Yep, there was formulas in that around to a .000 FTE. So some of them might be a little off, but the dollar figures are where they should be.
As soon as I said it out loud, I figured out what happened. Sorry.
So Vinnie, if I look at this chart, as of whatever, May 27th, what this says is there are almost seven people working in the administration. There's 15 approximate people working in capital operations and maintenance. Am I reading that right? There's approximately 60 teachers.
Correct.
Yep, remaining.
So it's a little deceiving, the DESI category of administration isn't exactly what we might consider administration.
Yeah, that's not principals.
Yeah, it doesn't mean this building. It's kind of Julie, me, Allyn. But when you look at the principals and a lot of the curriculum leaders, they're in different DESI categories. It's a little deceiving.
Yeah, because they would be like an instructional leadership where, yeah.
Exactly. Yep.
So in this, this would be if, this is, the numbers that you're seeing in the as of 5/27 includes the reduced positions that have been proposed but not yet approved.
So just to walk through a couple of them, so administration starts a little cutoff on my screen. You can see a reduction of approximately $38,000. This is due to the elimination of the 1.0 human resource benefits and payroll administrator. And it is offset by an increase of a .5 payroll clerk. So currently, how it's set up is our, is this position handles both HR and payroll. So we will ultimately, in theory, be eliminating the HR portion and redeploying the .5 payroll to have, to continue to have the payroll support. But what this means is a lot of increased work from the business office. So from just fiscal FY20, the business office has almost reduced by a 25% FTE. This year, we had reduced our full-time payroll clerk and had reduced a portion of our HR position as we had two part-time positions prior to this. So overall, we'll see an almost a 25% reduction. And what this ultimately means is kind of the elimination of the, of the support for our 300 employees. It'll be redeployed to myself, my administrator, our district accountant will pick up a lot of the essential responsibilities through the HR function. And in addition to that, in addition to this, a lot of the school leaders will have additional responsibilities, especially when it comes to the hiring process and managing the school spring postings. They will, they will definitely have a bigger hand in that role come next year. I think that's it. Yep. The next section is our capital operations and maintenance. We're seeing a reduction here of approximately two and a half employees, ultimately resulting in a budget reduction of 145,000. So to break this down for you, we are ultimately recommending a reduction of two maintenance office workers. This will definitely lead to some increased costs when it comes to contracted services. A lot of the preventative maintenance and repairs that they're conducting right now will, will be on a different timetable. It'll, it'll take a little longer to get these things done. A lot of it may have to wait until the summertime when there's more time freed up and the students aren't around. So we will have to go kind of throughout the year with a different preventative maintenance plan. In addition to that, we are eliminating the maintenance form and stipend. There will only be one maintenance worker left. Therefore, there really is no need for a forman. They would really just be overseeing themselves. So that will be part of the elimination if you approve it. And lastly, it is the 0.5 maintenance secretary. So all of this responsibility will be shifted to Tom Gary, our Director of Maintenance and Operations. Will be picking up a lot of the, a lot of the work himself, a lot of the budget entry stuff. And the invoice processing will, will all be run by Tom now.
So the next category is instructional leadership. We do see a, there is a potential reduction here of 5.5 full-time equivalent employees for a total of 478,853. To break that down for you, this includes 2.5 curriculum administrator FTEs. This includes the elimination of a pre-K to 12 Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, an elimination of our elementary literacy administrator and the elimination of our part-time elementary mathematics administrator. This is not a sustainable plan. You've heard me say this. I'm just going to keep reminding everyone. This is a crisis response. This is not a strategic recommendation. Going back to those three questions, we were trying to conserve those classroom teachers and those service providers that will have a direct impact on students. So this is something that you all are going to have to think about moving forward. I've had lots of conversations with the new superintendent about how the gap will be filled, that these three people, that will be created by the loss of these three positions if this were to happen. There will be no formal district-level curriculum leadership and coordination. So more responsibilities will fall on the superintendent and the building principals. Obviously, that means decreased oversight of the curriculum development, data analysis. And then it shifts the responsibility of planning and executing the district-wide professional development to a more shared leadership model. Again, this is not a sustainable plan. This is a crisis response. The only thing that gives me sort of cold comfort in this is that I don't believe academics will be our primary focus when we return to school. It's really going to be about relationships, routines and resilience and the social emotional needs of the students and the staff. This, in this DESI category is also where we put our elimination of a currently vacant IT technician. This has been one of our cost-saving measures during the closure to leave this position unfilled. And our IT department is willing to think about, you know, reassignment so that other staff will have to pick up some of the responsibilities and offset the staffing reduction into the next school year. These reductions are also a concern for me, knowing that the pace in which our teachers and our administrators, our school leaders and directors have had, have been working at for the last three months. I do worry about burnout as the, the summer is going to be very short this year. We have so much planning to do for reentry that I worry about everyone picking up these additional responsibilities on top of all of that. Additional reductions to consider is continuing to leave the vacant out-of-district chairperson unfilled. So that would be eliminating this from the FY21 budget. We were piloting this after our resignation in January. What we have found is that although other staff can pick up some of the responsibilities, there is going to be some continual conversations that needs to be, needs to happen in order to ensure that nothing's falling through the cracks and that we're really supporting all of our students and families, both in district and out of district. Another consideration is to not fill any of the teacher-in-charge stipends. So this is a stipend that exists at each of the schools, the elementary schools. And so what this means is that when principals are out of the building at district meetings or professional development, or if they're absent due to illness, there won't be a formalized support structure in place. We also have for you to consider an elimination of a part-time high school for office personnel position. And again, the responsibilities will just shift to other folks in the office.
Dr. Kukkenberger, may I ask you a question about that previous slide? The teacher charge stipends. So this is when the principals are out of the building. What do the associate principals, how do they factor into that?
So this is just for the elementary principal or assistant principals or associate principals. Good question.
Thank you.
Julie, it did, on that last slide, don't we have two out-of-district coordinators? So chair people and
No, we had one person and this person was on the teacher's salary guide and part of that bargaining unit. But there was only one and it's been vacant since January 10th.
Maybe, maybe what Stacy's thinking about is we have two in the district. We have one that does all of elementary and one that does all of middle school and high school.
That's correct. I thought there was two, one from middle school and one for high school.
But not for out-of-district, that's a different thing.
Those are the other three different positions. The elementary special ed administrator, that's an administrator. There is, there is a secondary special ed administrator. And this was a, a district coordinator who was on the teacher's salary, not an administrator.
Oh, so those other two are in the, are administrators?
Yes.
I did not know that. Okay.
Yeah, that was a little confusing. I was trying to figure that one out.
Okay, the next one, any more questions about that? Okay, up next, do you guys see when my thing is in the way here or does it only show on mine?
We don't see the top bar, no.
The next area is fringe benefits. So this is insurance, retirement and things of the like. And so in this area, this is really just due to Vinnie's stellar negotiation strategies. He was working diligently to find us the best possible healthcare rates this year. And so based on our original projection, that we are realizing a $27,000 reduction due to those negotiations. So thank you, Vinnie, for that. Good work. Is this still me, Vinnie?
Yes, yep.
So other teaching services here, you see a, our largest change in FTE reductions if all of these items were to be accepted and approved. It's 7.13 total full-time equivalents with a dollar change of $233,235. So as we unpack that, this is the elimination of 4.34 full-time equivalent elementary language arts TAs. So at each of our elementary schools, we have a certified reading specialist. And then depending on the school, there are two or more teaching assistants that provide direct services to students. So the proposal is to keep one, keep the certified reading specialist at each school and one full-time teaching assistant at each school. Of course, this means decreased supplemental literacy support for students who are struggling. And it also means that professional development will be needed to enhance the tier-one classroom instruction as we really will be encouraging classroom teachers to use inclusive practices and differentiated instructional approaches aligned with the universal design for learning model so that they can meet the needs of all of their students directly in their classrooms. One of the things, again, this is not something we would normally recommend. And in fact, I was advocating during the budget process that we needed to expand these tier-two supports across the district as we currently do not have any at the middle or high school. The only thing that kind of gives me cold comfort to keep, not to keep repeating the same phrase, but is that we know that all of our students are going to come back in the fall in a lot of different places. And so I think there's going to have to be a shift in mindset around what is our, like, what are our initial assessments look like? And how are we going to meet each student where they are? And so in essence, more and more students will have gaps. So we may have to look at curriculum alignment and things of that nature. The other item to consider here is the elimination of three full-time equivalent pre-K or preschool teaching assistants. So currently, we have a model that has about 15 to 18 preschool students in a classroom with one certified teacher and two teaching assistants. If this were to be approved, it would increase the student-to-teacher ratio as each classroom will now have one teacher and one TA with that same number of students. And this is the mix of students who need early intervention and typically developing peers to make up that classroom configuration. And it's usually about a 49 to 51 ratio of students who need those early intervention services and students who are developing at a quote-unquote typical pace.
Might I ask a quick question about that? So if you're in that pre-K classroom, that, it'll be how many students?
15, I believe, is what we're capping it at.
15. And so if one of those students has a one-to-one need, then that would be addressed.
Absolutely. That's a completely different
Way. So these TAs function as a whole class TA.
Yep. And right now, I believe our, our slots for typically developing peers is maxed. But we've left some space in those classrooms for students who will turn three and become eligible for services throughout the year. So they're not all maxed at 15 currently, but they could, that's, that's, they could get to 15.
And it's about, about half of the, of the students would be students receiving services and about half are students who are what would be deemed as typical peers.
Correct.
Okay.
In the same category, other teaching services, this, we had, if you remember, a new investment proposal for, to increase a therapeutic TA by .4. We are excluding that in this round of reductions and just maintaining our current level of therapeutic support for students at the, at this particular elementary school. We also had a resignation at the high school, middle school library. The media specialist resigned, I want to say in February, and we've left that position vacant. Our, something for you to consider here is to keep that position vacant, but add in a 1.0 teaching assistant. Of course, this changes service delivery for students in the learning commons. And the primary focus will really be on just maintaining the collection, re-shelving, doing some ordering. One other implication of this is this will become a NEASK finding and could have an impact on your accreditation as you work through the NEASK process. The NEASK reaccreditation process.
Julie, do you know that, I'm getting a little off topic here, the NEASK reaccreditation, given the COVID-19, will they push that off a little bit?
Don't quote me, but I think that they've already announced that they're going to delay their fall visits, which will then bump, you know, because they have kind of like a full schedule. So I think we were scheduled for the fall and I believe they've already changed the date, but I So I think we were scheduled for the fall and I believe they've already changed the date, but I don't quote me on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And obviously, if we're not physically in school or if there's restrictions that don't allow for that type of a visit to occur, then student safety is going to be the priority.
Julie, do you anticipate any anything else being a NEAS finding? I'm surprised that like a library, going from a librarian to a TA is the only thing that you we would anticipate.
No, there's other things in the initial report, if you remember back when Principal Tracy presented. I can't. There was concern about the roof, the size of the science labs, the documented written curriculum. At the high school are the few that I'm off the top of my head remembering. So. It'll be more than just the media specialist for sure.
Julie. Is there any way we can reach out to like some of the colleges? About, you know, helping like having student teaching assistants or something where we could save money. But utilize that they need to have their hours, whatnot to help us?
Yeah, I explored that pretty intensely during the budget process this year. We reached out to Endicott, we do host typically one or two Endicott fellows each year. And what's great about, in addition to student teachers, student teachers can't be left alone with students. They're there to actually learn from the mentor teacher. But in the fellowship programs, which many of the local universities have. You have someone who is pursuing, sometimes it's a second degree or they're already a certified teacher and they're working towards a masters. And so we looked at trying to secure when we were thinking about the idea that we could have a. Support in each of our kindergarten classrooms using fellows for that. It is a cost savings, there are some requirements, it is extra work for the teacher to host a fellow. Excuse me. And we explored that, we tried to see if there were teachers who were interested in hosting this year. But it wasn't something that folks felt comfortable moving forward with, and then COVID happened. So I do believe we will have it right now tentatively scheduled one or two fellows. But we weren't able to do it at the scale that I would have hoped, but it's definitely a conversation to continue moving.
That's something that would be a great idea considering our budget constraints. And from what you had said in the past, that there might be some shortages of teachers in the future. Not now, but in the future, possibly, but we don't know with COVID nineteen even, that it might help our school district.
It's a really, it's like a win, win, win all around, they get a really meaningful experience. We're able to have a really high quality teaching support. And also it's it's a when you host a fellow, I believe that it's a growth opportunity for the teacher that's hosting as well. And plus, of course, there's significant budget savings. It's a half the cost to host a fellow as it is to to hire your own TA, teaching assistant.
Julie, I just wanted to recognize that the Board of Selectmen from Hamilton have joined us now. And we should just let them know that what we're doing is going through the recommendations. On exactly how to allocate the one point two seven million that was cut from our budget last time. And to sort of last a couple of weeks ago and how to formalize that. So they're just coming in and sort of in the middle of this, so that's what's going on, so.
Okay, and we will work through here quickly and get you to the discussion and the motions. So up next is pupil services. Second here. And so in this category, we have proposed the idea to not fill the twenty one interest based clubs at all of the schools. So this would eliminate extracurricular interest based clubs. Or the other option would be to move to a hundred percent user based model. If you run the clubs and have teachers providing the advisement to that, you have to provide the contractual stipend as negotiated. So this would eliminate that unless you choose to move to a hundred percent user based model. And then reducing the district match for the athletic user fees down to twenty five percent. Which means that families will be responsible for seventy five percent of the cost to run the athletic programs. Okay, teachers. So in this category, we have worked with the middle school and high school leadership team and vetted our plans. Accepted some input from the curriculum leaders to come to these final decisions. Of reducing four classroom teachers between the middle school and high school. One point one teacher, one humanities teacher, one science teacher, one social studies teacher and one wellness teacher. This was really possible because we are also increasing the teaching load for all of the six twelve curriculum leaders. They will go from teaching two classes a day to teaching four classes a day, which is the max they can teach within the contract. We worked really hard to make sure that we weren't creating a bunch of part time positions as we looked for these cost savings. Because we know that part time positions, although it allows us to keep more people. It's really hard to retain people in part time positions. And then it's even more challenging to recruit people in part time positions. So the strategy behind that was if we had to reduce a significant number, how could we reduce full positions? So that we have a more sustainable and stable workforce. This does make some shifts at the middle school that again, aren't desired or evidence based. And it goes from that teaming model as it was to more of a junior high model. Although I will say that principal heavy and assistant principal level have come up with some really creative ideas. That I think are also going to improve some of the structures for our sixth grade students in terms of their social emotional development and supports. They're talking about developing a sixth grade academy, which would allow them to help students with executive functioning skills. With some of those social emotional needs to address some social issues that our students are experiencing. So you know, with with the loss comes opportunity in some ways. So. I'm I think I feel I feel really excited about the potential of what some of those changes could bring, even though it was really hard to get to this point. We also would need to increase the middle school special ed teaching position by a point four FTE. And what this really did was move some folks around the middle school and high school. So that we could fill a long term sub vacancy with an existing staff member. Rather than having to reduce another staff member and and then going out and hiring someone new to our organization. So that's the the gift to get in that maneuver. In this category, we always, we also give you. Some things to think about at the middle school in terms of leaving the vacant middle school reading specialist position open. This was vacant vacated in March due to a resignation. Partly because of its part time status, so it's interesting. And one week we went from thinking about how do we make this a one point O so we can retain a really awesome staff member? To now not even filling the vacancy given our current reality. We also are proposing the idea of eliminating world language for sixth graders altogether. So that would reduce a one point O Spanish position and a point six Mandarin position. Which means that it's likely that the sixth graders will have zero exposure to world language. Although with the creation of that sixth grade academy, that could be something that is part of the rotation. If staffing is available and if there's interest to do it. And then the next category is instructional materials. There's a small reduction here that was necessary in order to offset some of the negotiation reductions that were on the previous list. Because you are still in process, but needing to make these decisions, we needed to cover. A couple of ideas that that still need to be negotiated. And so what this does is reduce the science supplies at the elementary level for consumable materials. This would delay the purchasing. And we feel like this could be feasible, given that we have missed three months of in person supply usage. And we can look at current inventory and may need to still fill some gaps if we are able to be in person in using those supplies. But that's our final reduction there. So as you can see, again, with the rounding, my numbers are slightly different, twenty two point eight nine FTEs lost. If all of these reductions were to be approved, but it hits the one point two seven million dollar reduction amount.
Can I ask you a quick question? So last meeting, you gave us the kindergarten enrollment numbers. And I did not see the reduction of the seventh kindergarten teacher on that list. Is that so are we contemplating the seventh kindergarten teacher still based on the fact that? The numbers we have right now showed about twenty two kids per class if it was only six classes.
Yeah, so our, the last update I have, I haven't looked at it yet this week, but we had a hundred and forty one pre registered kindergartens, kindergarteners. And so exactly do the math, divide that by six, and that's a really high class size. And so we threw, once we were able to identify the actual positions that were being reduced. We were able to pull that off the reduction list because you're absolutely going to need it. Although I will say I would recommend waiting until we know what school's going to look like next year. And we get information from families, how many people plan to send their kindergarteners. But you'll have that in your in the budget to implement if needed without having to go into a deficit sit situation like we did last summer.
In the event that we didn't need it, because people made the decision to hold their kindergarteners one more year. Then we would have the ability to allocate that to be some other position that might be needed. Whether it's an additional social emotional support or it's some sort of elementary school. Curriculum leadership person or something like that.
Those preschool teaching assistants, I think I would want to, if I were going to continue to be here in August, I would be reassessing everything. And looking at, you know, what is what is the current reality? Because, you know, one of the things that's kind of counterintuitive to this, at a time when we know we're going to need more human resources than ever. We're experiencing this massive reduction. At a time when we know our kids are going to be coming in with more needs than ever. You know, we're eliminating some of those essential services that they that we would typically be advocating for more of. So that's kind of the the situation that we're in. But absolutely, that gives you a little bit of flexibility. Because remember, you know, one of the things that that I hope for for everyone here is that. You're able to secure enough resources so you can respond to and you can be agile in the unknown that that will be the next school year and beyond.
Thank you. Julie, do you think there's, I mean, from, I know that we're always seem to be in the red for food services. If we were to go into fall and there's going to be some kind of mixture, going to school, staying home, whatever. How does that affect us going into fall? Is it going to cost us a lot more, especially say if we have to get our classes ready and they're probably going to eat in the classrooms? Will it cost more or will we be more in a deficit than normal?
So I think that the challenge with school nutrition programs is that they're they're not really money makers. It's not like going to a restaurant, we don't get to serve fancy drinks that, you know, cover. Cover the bottom line. And so lunch will have to look different. But it really depends on the more families that purchase school lunch, the better we're able to balance that budget. The because you have you have your overhead costs or your overhead costs, whether two hundred kids by lunch or five hundred kids by lunch. And so it's really about promoting the school nutrition program and having more families purchase the meals that will help you stay in the black. And so thinking about what are what are the things that kids like? I know Catherine Donovan, our food service director, is always trying to get more creative. And she's even done some collaboration with high school kids to talk about what want to see on the shelves. So that kids will purchase the products and the meals that she's creating. So it's really kind of like a marketing thing more than anything. But lunch will look really different, there might be more costs if we have to package things individually. In ways that we typically wouldn't, if we have to deliver meals to classroom, there might be more staffing hours needed to do that. If they're not able to get their meals from the food service line. So that is definitely one of the things that's on our minds about in terms of unbudgeted unknowns.
Thank you.
Great question.
Dr. Kuchenberger, may I ask you a question? One of the known unknowns is getting our classrooms, our infrastructure, I guess, ready for return. You know, return to school, physical distancing. Installation of hand washing stations, sanitizing stations, screens and all that. If we eliminate the techs, who is going to do that?
So the custodians will be highly trained. Tom Gary through the closure has had them all working on a variety of online professional development platforms. And they've done a great job staying up on that, which then in turn will save the district money in our insurance and things as well. So there's like a, that's a really. Great program that has many benefits. But you're right, Peter, again, not knowing exactly what we will need. This is almost a perfect segue for the capital budget and what Vinnie and I will talk about next. But everyone's going to have to look differently or work differently next year. The the roles and the responsibilities will be defined in a way that it could, it could look like kids don't come to school every day. It could look like we're in two days, we have a day to clean, we're back for two days. You know, I don't want to speculate too much, but there's a lot of different scenarios that are being kicked around out out there in the superintendent worlds. As we try to think about what could this really look like and as we study what other districts are doing around the globe. So it will certainly, like everything, the work, the workload's going to increase for the remaining staff. We don't, we don't have people sitting around doing nothing currently, they're all busy eight hours a day, forty hours a week. So it's certainly going to be an added burden to other folks for sure.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that how you teach the skills to do. You know, the technical skills to in, you know, know how to do construction and things like that. It's then, you know, how do you train that? How do you train a lifetime of experience? And, you know, to to a custodian who may not have had that experience, being able to set this. I'm just fearful that this hundred and forty five thousand dollars that we're saving by eliminating them could quickly shoot up to six hundred thousand. If you you take that four thousand hours and multiply it times a hundred and fifty, rather than the twenty five we're paying them now. I'm just concerned that it's, we are not going to save money, we're actually going to end up spending more money by the elimination of this program. And part of part of it is, I guess, I've never seen the evidence of. Has this program saved us money rather than hiring contractors? And I should have asked for that.
Yeah, I I'll just share with you anecdotally because I don't have the numbers in front of me. One of the challenges that we have faced is that like the town inspectors and and other. Other regulations require us to be using people who have specific licenses to do the plumbing and the HVAC and some of the other. Some of the technical work. And I think the way that plan was designed was that those would be the people who would be in those positions. But that's not how it's played out. The people, most of the people in those current positions have been trusted, reliable, exceptional employees. That were kind of like promoted up within the district into those positions. So we're still having to, we're still having to have added costs for contracted services, I guess. It hasn't eliminated that need completely for us.
But if we eliminate these, like, you don't need, you don't need a licensed plumber, electrician or HVAC person to install a door. Replace a window, install tile, paint walls, we're just going to have to get contractors for that, right?
Yes.
So I'm just fearful that the cost is still going to shoot up, even if. Even if, you know. Yeah, that's my biggest fear is that we are going to end up with a surprise increase in expenses at the end of this year by eliminating this program.
And that could be true for many of these reductions, Peter. There will be unanticipated unintended consequences to every every single one of these reductions.
Yeah, and for instance, going back to slide twelve. The elimination of the ELA TAs at the elementary school. We know that for every dollar spent at the early ages, you are saving nine dollars. So I'm just fearful that we are increasing our expenses in the future. I mean, these, you know, when you look at the three questions, what supports must be needed for students? Does it, what's the direct impact on the students and the equity question? These students are are already facing learning, struggling readers already have a learning gap. They're going to have a learning gap from this missed four months of school. And they're going to have fewer adults to support them. And I just, again, I think it's, it's. It it doesn't meet the criteria, you know, of those three questions. These are critical folks. And it's just going to increase costs later on.
Peter, do you have suggestions?
Well, I know there's other ways to save money and I just don't know. Uh, well, I know there's other ways to save money and I just don't know, I mean, I don't know what the results of the negoti-, you know, the negotiation subcommittee were. I just know when I look at these collective bargaining considerations, you know, there's eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars potentially right there. And then if we increase sports user fees, in one of our meetings several weeks ago, I came up with one point two eight million dollar savings. And that covered the, the reduction from revenues from the state. So I'm just, I just, I just honestly believe that this is, these are not the right decisions and that we have other options.
At this point, we do not have an agreement from negotiations. We have been discussing a potential savings, but it will in no way, shape or form come anywhere near one point two million dollars. And so because we do not have those concessions, we not at this point act as if we do, and even if we did, it's not gonna, what's currently being discussed is not gonna equate to one point two seven million dollars.
Right, what we're looking at is more, um, some flexibility in our funding for next year. And, and even saying that, i- it's not much.
It would be great. I know like in today's paper, there was a article that the Salem Teachers Association is taking a zero COLA. They've given up some professional development money. Um, you know, all they're gonna be getting is steps and columns, but that is not where we are right now, so.
It, it's just, it's frustrating, cuz and people around the world and around the country are losing everything and we're only asking to give up a little bit of future money to save our students' education, to save jobs, to save our, like, everything that's been built over years. You know, the district's been built over years to get to the high quality education that we have and.
Peter, I to- I totally understand you. I agree. I don't like losing some of these positions, but right now we don't have any kind of, um, consensus within negotiations of these contracts. And I would like to see personally a zero percent COLA, but, you know, across the board, but we haven't been able to get any kind of agreement to save some of these programs. Um, and we really, you know, this is, we've got to do something. We can't just keep dragging on. We've been talking about the same thing for the last several weeks and unfortunately negotiations hasn't been able to change any thing and, um, I personally feel like we should, you know, I wish we did ha- uh, had a better relationship with some of these bargaining units to get asked for the zero percent COLA, uh, you know, across the board.
Yeah, I mean, I know teachers are underpaid. I'm one of them. And I'm, I'm a victim of budget cuts and I'm looking for a teaching position and I just, so I understand the teachers are underpaid, the staff is underpaid, everyone in education is underpaid, but to give up a little to save what we have is not a big ask.
Um, so Julie. Um, I know the next thing you had a slide on the capital thing, but I think.
Yeah, if you.
That wanna talk about the budget budget part and I, do we wanna move to listen to that or do we want? Like what are we, how?
What's left in your presentation, Julie?
Um, so the, what's left is just the summary and then the motion. So I don't know if you wanna make those decisions before you talk with the Board of Selectmen or if you wanna talk with the Board of Selectmen and then come back to make the decisions. But you have to make those decisions today.
Right. I think we should do the summary and then I think we should hear what they have to say, cuz I don't know if it will impact the decision-making or not.
I agree.
I don't know.
So I'll go ahead and stop the screen share at this point and then.
Oh, okay, so this is the summary.
So this is the capital budget, which you've also, just reminding people that this works hand in hand with the operating budget when we talk about all of that equipment and you know, some of the ways we may need to change the way the physical structure of the school works. This budget helps us do that. It's gonna be essential. We don't have that money in our operating budget. Plus it addresses safety issues. This is the DESI categories again, just for you to review and Vinnie, Vinnie, please feel free to happen.
Yep. So this is the overall operating budget with the one point two seven million dollar reduction. You can see that at the bottom, um, it's the total calculation of the town assessments. This has not changed from the prior assessment. The only difference on here is the uh, top line and the total offsets and total funding sources. The net operating budget, uh, is the same exact number as the previous budget.
But, 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 but go back to that. But we should point out that the, the, on the very top, on the very right-hand corner is the new percent increase in our budget, which is five, three hundreds percent.
Correct, and prior, I believe it was nine point seven maybe?
Yeah, thank you.
So then here is our debt service assessment. Again, this is no change from the prior assessment. The total is four hundred and thirteen. This includes the new capital projects for FY twenty-one, which only accounts for a fifteen thousand dollar payment in FY twenty-one. And it continues to pay off the Cutler Roof from twenty thirteen and the Bueker and Winthrop Boreo Glass Projects, I believe, from FY fourteen and then the Sprickler Projects from the prior summer. And then he- here is the total of our operating and debt service combined. Um, it's cut off on my screen, sorry. This again is no change from prior and we're looking at a total of a eight point five one percent increase from the town assessments, uh, broken out, uh, as an increase of eight point five seven from operating and three point seven four from the debt. I was just trying to go through it quickly, sorry. Uh, and then the following are motions, but I think we might come back to those, correct?
Great. Um, so David had to step away. He'll be back in just a minute, um, or two. I'm not sure what, what happened, but, um, we wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for actually reaching out and inviting us to meet with you. It just happened that the, a good time was when we were having our meeting, so we are, are glad that we're meeting with you, but at our time. So it's sort of like you're throwing the party, but we're having it at our house. So that's great. Um, so I guess we would like to hear from you about exactly what you wanted to talk about. We're very excited about the town meeting and happy to hear what you have to say.
Thank you very much, Michelle. I'll start off very briefly. Um, this was, um, obviously this is very difficult for all of us. Um, it, to me, comes down to making a decision between two bad choices um, in terms of the budget increase that's being asked for and what that'll do to, um, if it's not passed, what it'll do to the school system? If it is passed, what it'll do to our property taxes? And in either case, it's gonna affect our home values, which affects all of us. Um, Joe, our town manager, I think, has come up with a, with a good compromise solution. Um, and I'm gonna hand it off to Joe and let him, um, kind of describe what his idea was that might allow us to move forward on the same page, which is what something I think we all hope can happen. Um, I'm, I will say I'm disappointed that the negotiations haven't, um, been able to move forward more aggressively as hard as you all have tried. Um, I know that in the private sector, those that are fortunate enough to have a job um, have seen a pay decrease, um, and some pretty severe cuts. So it's disappointing to hear that the union hasn't been able to recognize that in the same way. But, um, let me hand it off to Joe. Um, and Joe, if you could describe.
Jeff, should we open up the meeting?
Yeah, oh, yes. Well, yes, I guess we need to do that, don't we, Darcy? Thank you. So we're here for our second meeting tonight. We, we met earlier, so I apologize. So we will open up the meeting, please, if everybody could. Um, we'll start off with Darcy, if you could.
Darcy Dale here.
All right, Bill Olson.
Wim Olsson here.
Sean.
Don Farrell present.
Rosemary.
Yeah, mute Rosemary.
Jeff Hubbard here.
Rosemary, sorry, Rosemary Kennedy here.
Great, thank you. Joe, do you mind, um, describing what your idea, the concept that you had?
Sure, thanks, uh, thanks, Jeff. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen, uh, and to the, uh, school committee for agreeing to meet with the, with the Board of Selectmen. I think that, you know, the, the last few months has been really kind of difficult and uh, we're all aware that, you know, these are, these are tough decisions and conversations to have. Um, excuse me, sir. Good, stop. Sorry about that. It's one of the things with Zoom these days. Um, so my, uh, my idea was that, you know, we're heading into town meeting and the Board of Selectmen is still getting ready to wrestle with how to vote and make recommendations on the two budget questions and the capital request. Previously, the Board of Selectmen and the FinCon and Hamilton had asked the, the school committee to consider, uh, reducing its assessment to the town. Uh, you were able to do that. Uh, you have since made, uh, some recommendations and you voted on a budget that is one point two million dollars less than um, your previous request. Um, given that it's now at this point likely that you'll get more state aid than you had been anticipating when you made that request, we'd ask you to respectfully, we respectfully ask you to maintain that budget that you recently adopted, the one point two million dollars less. Uh, a- agreed to commit to that budget and say that you'll commit to that budget on the town meeting floor and, uh, take a vote tonight that if you get the state aid that we now think that you're gonna get, yeah, that additional money could either be, uh, returned to the two towns in form of a reduced assessment, uh, during the second half of the year or could be put into E and D to decrease your potential request for FY twenty-two or some combination of the two. You could keep some and give some back. The, the, the point is that the towns are, are working really hard to try to balance our budgets to limit our impact on our residents, but still provide the same quality services just as you were doing the school department. We understand it. It's not new or different for us than it is for you. It's still challenging. But if you can work with us on this, you know, I think it sets a new path for how we'll work together in the future. I know I've already had some discussions with, with, uh, superintendent and at least one or two members of the school committee about possibly starting to meet earlier. Um, so that we can share with you our revenue projections for the ensuing year way earlier, so that you can have that in mind as you start to sit down and go through your budget process. But this, this would be a good first step to kind of helping us establish that working relationship. And I'm hopeful that you'll, uh, you'll agree with the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen is, is looking for a way to confirm that you can live within that budget that you outlined a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we don't get to tell you how to spend the money, but if you can live within that budget, then, um, I think that the the ma- the majority of the Board of Selectmen may be willing to, um, to support your full request on me, so.
I echo that, Joe. I think you, you know, from my opinion, you communicated well, we wanted, if you rewind back to February, you know, things were different then, but we sort of, at that point, agreed five percent made sense, three percent, the additional three percent didn't, so that's why we broke it out into two votes, two-two and two-three. Now we're even questioning the two-two vote at the five percent. But we understand that if you, if that vote passes at two-two with, with a state funding cut, this, that's not really a five percent increase. It's really still reduction or, or level, levels funding. So it's sort of a convoluted way to get to where we wanted to get, but where we wanted to get to is that the school would, would cut one point two million dollars for the funding, so. Um, so that, so if we get you guys to commit to returning any chapter seventy money that you didn't think you were gonna get to the town, um, we could start to get behind the budget.
So I just wanted to clarify something about. So if more state aid comes in, we can't spend that without going to the towns to ask. So that would require a town meeting because that would increase our budget. So that money would naturally flow into E and D. But it wouldn't flow in for next fiscal year. It would flow into the E and D in the next fiscal year and then be made available in the following fiscal year. Um, so I didn't want that sort of timing to get confused, um, at all, but.
But over, over a certain percent doesn't go to E and D, it gets returned to the town or it all goes to E and D no matter what the percentage is?
So we provide the money back based, ooh, Vinnie, go ahead. Is it on the certified amount or is it on the projected certified amount? Now I'm having a little bit of a.
It's on the certified amount, so the state's, the state has a ceiling for E and D set at five percent of our budget and then we internally have our own ceiling of three percent. So anything over three percent gets returned no matter what. If you look at our current uh, FY twenty-one proposed budget, you'll see a line item in there for approximately two hundred thousand. That represents, um, the amount over three percent that we mandatory have to return to you.
But that money was not saved this year. It was saved last. So there's, there's this like lag, um, so, but yes, e- every last, two years ago, there was some money saved. It flowed into E and D this fall. This fall, there was an amount of about two hundred thousand dollars that was over three percent. So that part has been applied to the budget going forward. But that money didn't happen this year. That money happened last year.
Exactly. It skips one year in the budget cycle. So anything we save from FY nineteen gets taken off your FY twenty-one budget. It just skips one year.
Which from what I've been hearing, um, from some people is, like, there's some concern, like, all of this economic, um, you know, sort of downturn now is gonna have sort of some rippling effects through several fiscal years. And so any extra money we would get from the state this year flowing into E and D and then being available in the succeeding fiscal year might be a really good thing.
So I'll add two points for your consideration. It is, as nice as that sounds to then be able to think, okay, so there could be some potential tax relief if chapter seventy is level funded and you all project, are approving and projecting a rate that would be twenty percent less. Remember that you're, you are, you are in the middle of a crisis response. And so what is on this reduction list is not sustainable. I, a year will be hard, two years will be really hard. Beyond that, you're going to have to be thinking about how do we rebuild these things. Um, and if you are, if you are reducing the town assessment, then when your next superintendent and leadership team come to you and say, we now need to replenish these positions, or restore these positions, or class sizes, or enrollment has shifted, class sizes are increasing. Just going to make that percent increase over your end final budget to what you actually need larger again. And I know that was a big focal point this year was the percent increase over the previous year approved. You're just gonna be making that gap wider by doing that. And so as long as everyone understands what it is you're deciding to do.
Yeah, this, this is not steady state here, I wanna say, right? We're, we're not saying that, like, all these cuts that we're considering tonight is not steady state. Like, these positions, uh, uh, this is my last school meeting, so future school meetings, school meetings will likely try to restore these positions so that we are operating at a better state. You know, not just for the kids, but also for the towns as well. Cuz remember, the idea is to try to address those areas of highest expense increases, which is special ed, right? We currently don't have programs right now in the district to be able to meet the needs, which is why you see very large increases in added district tuition and added district transportation. By bringing programs back into the district, which means positions and programs, that, that increase year-over-year increase will start to, will start to, you know, decrease. Will start to, the rate will decrease over time.
There's an invest, there's an investment we need to make in, in, in salaries for special ed in order to bring kids back into the district or not send them out of district, right? So you have a two or three-year payback and investment you need to make, but you guys haven't put that, that plan has not been put on paper yet. We're looking for the new, maybe the new superintendent to sort of create that plan or?
We actually, uh, so Bill, we actually already have a plan in place that we started two years ago and we're continuing to build on it as we see. It's important for everybody to here to realize that just because we put this into place, that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna be able to bring people back. Right? That means that we're not sending more people in the future. These are two very important distinctions to make. Right? So, so while it, it doesn't seem like it's a cost savings because like, well, you had fourteen people at Landmark last year, you have fourteen people again this year. It's gonna be very difficult to try and bring any of them back.
But they, as they graduate, they fall, as they graduate, they fall off, they're.
So this is, this is long-term investments. These are all long-term investments.
Can I ask, so, so in my thinking about this, if the state funding is restored, if we knew the state funding was restored now, then we, maybe we wouldn't be making these cuts, right? Okay. But if the state funding is restored and then next year we get our level plus our 30 per student, then that means the revenue came back without having to have any additional assessment to the town. So we would be able to restore some of those things in the next year without an increase to the town because we would have a different revenue source, which is revenue coming back from the state. Though I'm not as super concerned about these things being permanent because I don't believe that the reduction from the state is permanent. And I also am hoping that they at least can restore some of the Chapter 70 funding that they were maybe projecting. You know, so if we take the hit in transportation and we take the hit in circuit breaker, that's not as drastic as taking the hit in the Chapter 70. So it's not, that money comes back, we'll have the money to restore because the money will come back from the state in the next fiscal year.
Right. And this is why your metric of using what's the year-over-year increase percentage is not the right metric to be using, right? Because if you think about it now, we're already reducing the budget by 1.2%, right? Or, sorry, 1.2 million dollars, which is 20%. 20% state aid. I don't know what it is with the overall school budget.
3%, 3%.
So you're already now starting, if you're saying that the tolerance for the Board of Selectmen is a 5% increase year-over-year, right? You don't really, you're not giving us that tolerance though. Because if next year we have that state aid restored, it's not a 5%, you're not giving us a 5% increase. You're actually giving us less than that, right? So that's why the metric is not the correct metric to be using.
I mean, we're having an issue. We're up against a levy and next year we'll be looking at overrides. And once that happens, that's perpetual, right? You know, and that's what we're trying to avoid here.
I understand that. Towns. I mean, this is a revenue problem. I mean, you guys know this too. I've, you know, I've listened to your guys' meetings as well. This is a revenue problem.
I mean, I think there's a couple of different ways. There's always a couple of different ways to skin a cat. If I could just offer, you know, you know, when we cut something on the town side and, you know, because it's a bad budget year, you want to make some changes, you have to make some reductions. When we start to have better budget years, we don't just go back and hire back those same positions that we got rid of. We will, we look for different ways to do things, more efficiently, more sustainable, different ways to do things. So, you know, I think your argument, Gene, while well-taken and well-intended, I think misses the point that just, you're making cuts this year. So next year with the new superintendent, new leadership team, you might look at rebuilding it differently going forward. So you might not get back to the same number. You're making an assumption that isn't necessarily going to hold once you get into planning for the future years. What we need to do is recognize the fiscal reality we're in right now. You've already identified a way to save some money that would help us and you move forward. Yeah, it's a terrible situation, but sometimes you can, you know, make lemonade out of lemons.
Yeah, we're hoping, as Julie said, the unintended consequences of this cut may have some positive results and some creative solutions that we maybe didn't think about before.
I understand that, but when parents and kids are saying, "Why can't I take Spanish in sixth grade? Why are my kindergarten classes 20 kids, 23 kids in a class? You know, why can't I have, you know, additional TAs in a preschool class?" I mean, that's not being efficient. That's just being, that's just being kind of cruel a little bit.
I don't think we know what school is going to look like in the fall. It might be, you know, I've heard they might be going part-time. They might be utilizing the buildings only a very small portion of the time and the balance will be remote learning. There might be a hybrid system that will be revealed. We really don't know. So it just seems to me, if we go with the 5% and we wait and see what the state does, if 2.3 does pass and it's another 3%, so you guys get all 8.25%, we want to make sure that if any extra revenue comes to the schools, we're going to have a mechanism so that we can, I hate to use the term clawback, the excess because we are on, and this is 100% of the town, this is everybody in the town, including the children and the parents. We're looking at overrides and we're looking at a minimum of, a very basic minimum of free cash of only 150,000 dollars for a town of this size. It's unsustainable and I feel like if we can't, if we can't come to some agreement with this situation that we're in, we're looking at big trouble. So I'm a little bit confused because the mechanism that you're talking about already... No, it already exists because right now, once our budget is approved, that's the only amount that we could spend. If more state money comes in, we cannot spend it because we haven't been authorized to spend it because the town meeting requires an authorization to spend. I mean, yes, we could go back to another town meeting and ask to get it authorized, but that never happens. So then that money flows into the E and D and then we have a policy that when that E and D goes over 3%, that any amount over 3% goes back to the town. And we've been doing that for several years. And in this year, that money is 200-something thousand dollars. So that mechanism already exists and has been in place for several years. So I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the difference is.
I think we just wanted to hear, I think we just wanted to hear you talk through that to make sure that there wasn't, I mean, that's sort of, I don't think we're questioning the policy. We just want to hear you guys talk through the policy and make sure that we're all on the same page.
And I think everybody, very, just like Darcy said, I think all of us would agree if there was some emergency, that the state gave us more money and there was some emergency that we needed that money to open the schools and operate them, that it would be reasonable to ask for that money. And I think that the community would support that. But absent some known, like funky thing that we have to add modular classrooms at every school and 10 of them, we've put together a plan that's not desirable but workable for next year. It doesn't mean that the following year we might not try and say, "You know what? Really need those TAs back because we've kind of missed out on two years of learning now." But there is a mechanism already to do what I feel like I've heard from you.
If it's okay, can I ask Vinny just a couple of numbers questions? Vinny, can you refresh my memory on, for this year in the 8% and change increase, how much of that was contract negotiations? Is it four point something? Am I misquoting that or am I close to that?
So for COLAs, are you referring to?
COLAs and the whole retirement, et cetera.
I believe it was about 800 grand, but I'll look to confirm that.
Okay. And then just two more questions.
Make sure you remind about the column.
And then the next one was, we've got a capital ask for this year. Do you have, and you know, we've kind of been talking about capital plans for the School Committee and the schools for a handful of years now. And last year you kind of had a list. This year it looks like it's a little more organized. Do you have a potential capital ask for next year already in mind that I could know a number from? And then the last one is, I know we had some bonds falling off. And how many do we have roll off this year and are you spending that money or rebonding with that stuff that fell off?
So to go backwards, nothing rolled off this year. The high school, middle school bond rolled off, I believe, two years ago.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, that was almost, I know it was about 1 million dollars. That rolled off two years ago. Nothing's rolling off this year. And I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Second was about the capital budget ask for next year.
We do have a capital plan for the next 10 years, but it hasn't been decided if we're going to ask for anything going forward. There is a plan with a list of activities, but there's no conversation on what we'll make it on next year.
Okay. I had a few numbers questions as well too. So in our budget, in the way it's written on the warrant right now, is that the 2.2 is considered the 5% increase and the 2.3 is considered, but in reality with the state funding decrease, your budget decrease is not really five and three. Do you know what that equates to now for your budget? If 2.2 gets approved, how does it affect, what percentages affect your budget now overall? Have you done that math?
I have not done that math, but I can certainly do it and get that number for you.
You're not really at 8% anymore. You're at 5.9.
You know, I think something we should clarify is they have not, to my knowledge, you have not decreased your ask from the towns, correct?
Correct. The assessment to the town is the same.
The revenue came down, so the spending came down to match, but because of, yeah, so the assessment stays the same because these two went down together, but...
The budget still went down 1.2 million dollars.
You have not decreased your ask to us. And so there are a couple of points that I wanted to make. The first is that cities and towns all over Massachusetts, I've done some research, and universally, they have cut their asks. Their asks were much smaller than 8.25%. I certainly didn't poll every single town, so I can't say I did that. But I would say the average ask was maybe 3.5%, 3.8%. And with the COVID-19, school departments worked with the towns too. And actually, in all of the cases that I looked at, either by givebacks from when the schools were not in session from March until June or just cutting things, asks were decreased to say, and so I'll use Milton just because I have this right in front of me. Their original ask was for 3.7% and now their ask was 1.8%. And so school departments all over the state understand that there are dramatic decreases in available revenues. They understand that there's a 20% unemployment rate here in Hamilton. A survey from the Globe has said that we have 20% unemployment in Hamilton. We don't know how many of those people are going to go back to work. And we can talk about all the formulas and we can get very complicated, probably more than I understand and I will admit that. But the bottom line for me is that our taxpayers, the average taxpayer, is going to be asked to pay 800 dollars a year more in taxes if this 8.25% increase goes through. I have a problem with that because people are appalled at tax increases. And when you add a very high unemployment rate, it's unsustainable. You, the school department in this town is not a separate entity. You are part of a community. And maybe as a selectman, my job is to look at the big picture, but I would think a school department is part of a community and it's important that you consider the community who provides you your resources. And I have not heard one single concern for these tax increases. I've heard, "We need this, we need that." Well, we all would like to have this and that, but there's been no appreciable effort to make this palatable for taxpayers, for everybody in this town.
So that's really an oversimplification of the, you know, the problem at hand. You're completely ignoring the fact that all of our original 5% ask, it was about a 2% that was held over from last year, right? We started the year with a 600,000 budget, I mean, a deficit. And then now, you know, we're sort of looking at making these cuts at, you know, 1.2 million. You know, and to say that we're actually not doing our part, we're, you know, we're cutting a really decent sized chunk of our staff. When we told you back in February, we actually needed more, right? Our original ask was actually at 13% because we said, in order to actually keep this district functioning at the level everyone in our town expects, right? The reason why we were all voted into our office and to actually try and reduce expenditures long-term, that we do need more, right? So, and we're telling you, the experts on this district, that we need more, right? So then oversimplify and say we're actually not doing that isn't the case because at the same time, we're bringing up year after year.
I think we have to...
Year after year, excuse me, just let me finish, that it's going to be, it's going to cost us. The revenue stream coming out of town, right?
Mute their mics.
I can't hear it.
I just muted them. It should be okay now.
All right. But that the revenue stream is insufficient, right? You keep coming to us and saying that we need to cut. We're telling you that we can't provide the services, right? We can't provide the services while cutting. And just to Peter's example earlier, by cutting maintenance positions, we're going to be spending more in contracted services. That's every single thing within our district. We're telling you that upfront. I'm telling you that for next year already, right? I know that. We know that. We've been saying it. We can't be more clear that that's what's going to happen. I understand. I'm a taxpayer. Everyone on this board are taxpayers in town. We understand the financial implication on us as taxpayers.
But what was the 600,000 deficit from? Can you refresh my memory on all the...
That was for...
So it's a couple of things. It was that this year we had an increased enrollment in the kindergarten level, so we had to hire kindergarten teachers.
FTE, right?
Pardon me?
Another FTE, another teacher, yeah.
Right. And then we also, we have to provide services to students who are of preschool age. So we had an increased enrollment in that area. And we have to provide that on the day that they turn three. So if they turn three on September 1, we have to provide it September 1. If they turn three on February 1, that's when we have to start providing it. So we had an increased enrollment in our preschool. So we had to hire not only the teacher, but we also had to hire the support staff to go with that. The good news is that we were also able to get some tuition-paying peers to offset some of that cost. And then unbeknownst to us, there were some added district placements decided last spring that were not included in the budget.
Okay. That was the one I remember.
But it wasn't just that. There were, like, we had to hire people internally because there were more children coming into the school than had been anticipated.
And Sean, I can tell you right now, when we go back into school in September, there are going to be needs that we're going to have to fill. There's going to be unanticipated hiring. I can guarantee it. I don't know who it's going to be. I don't know when it's going to be, but I can guarantee you it's coming.
How do you project that with such certainty? I don't understand.
So because we know every single one of our students in the entire district is going through a traumatic event right now. And we know the effects of trauma on students in classrooms. It increases their needs exponentially. That means all of these TAs we're cutting, all, these are people that are actually sitting there that actually assist in the needs of these students that we're now not providing. We're going to need social workers. We're going to need, you know, specialists to come in, a trauma specialist to come in and help these students. This is the reality of the situation. So I don't know, I'm not laughing. I don't understand why you're laughing.
The reality is we don't know what it's going to look like.
No, no, we know. I can guarantee...
You're going to have to temper... Yeah, you have, I don't know if Bill wants to go out and come back, but, so. I think it's a situation that's evolving and nobody can say with certainty that anything that is going to happen because we just don't know. And I think we're going to have to be flexible and we're going to have to be smart and we're going to have to take care. But I don't think anybody knows what the fall is going to look like. Darcy?
Things are subject here.
Were you guys here? I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly where in the presentation you guys came in, but I think at the beginning of the... At the beginning of the presentation, there was a little bit of discussion about, there was some money saved by not having the schools open. We didn't have to transport some children. I think Vinny's going to...
I need you.
Bill, real quick here. Can you mute Bill real quick? Bill, real quick here. Can you mute Bill real quick? And then also, you know, we didn't have to pay to heat the building. You know, we couldn't, couldn't do some labs, so we didn't buy some of the supplies for the labs. So it's possible that we'll have some savings from not having the buildings. Open some part of the year. But it is true that in. We know that the kids have some additional needs, even just socialization. Like when kindergarten whispers come in, they haven't been socialized. It takes a lot to get them like back in the mood of being in a group and sharing and. And that happens even at the middle school level. I mean, the first, I can tell you as a teacher, the first like. Three weeks of school, it's all about teaching them how to like act like human beings instead of act like, you know. Roaming the streets and having a good time. But we're, we've decided that we have a budget, so we have to figure out how to work within that budget. Unless there's some large issue, like guess what? You have to only have this many teachers. And you have to provide this many hours, and so you're gonna need to hire more teachers in order to meet the needs. That the, that the state tells us. It's not, we're not, if the state tells us we have to do something else. We're all gonna have to figure out how to do that because we don't have control over that. We approved a budget that we do have control over. And we're trying to work within that next year. That is what, that's what the whole vote means.
I just have to go back to like somehow we don't know what's gonna happen in the fall. We might not know exactly what school will look like, but what we know is it's going to look dramatically different. What we do know is every single teacher and every single student and every single. Person in our community has experienced a sustained traumatic event through COVID nineteen. The social, the social isolation that has occurred. The sheer amount of regression that has occurred for students who have not been able to receive specialized services and critical therapies. It's no laughing matter. That is at one hundred and fifty percent a guarantee. And I know this, we know this because we're educational experts. I've devoted my whole life to this. This is my life's work. And it is something that is going to be very, very challenging. Even to get staff and students to feel comfortable and confident to be able to walk through the door in the midst of a global pandemic. Is going to take a Herculean effort. And so to think for any moment. That somehow we're not going to have to address the trauma, the chronic toxic stress. That families and students and staff have gone through is just. You're kidding yourselves if you think that that's not gonna be an issue. That is the reality and it's going to require a whole host of services. It's going to require us to shift our mindsets. It's gonna require us to think completely differently about this thing called school that you all have experienced. It's not going to look like that this year. It's not gonna look like that ever again.
So, so we're just. We're, we're just thinking about the, the expenses of that. I think Darcy was also bringing up the, the, the cost of this. You know, I, I don't think anybody's minimizing the trauma that we have, this entire nation has gone through because of this. But I think. On the other hand, we need to, we need to think about how we can do that within a reasonable amount of money. Nobody's saying that these things aren't, aren't traumatic and. I, I think. I think the reality is we don't have unlimited funds to be able to, to, to provide all the things that we would like to provide. I think that's the reality and we have to look at that realistically. I'm, I'm a parent, I'm an auntie, I have two nephews in the school whom I adore. And, and if, if it were possible, I would give them anything in the world they ask for, but I also understand. That there are needs of other people in this town and we have to take that into consideration. It's not to minimize the importance of things that children are going through, that adults are going through. Certainly, certainly I understand, but I think we all understand that.
May I, may I address the point about redo, reducing our ask? I mean, there is zero excess in this budget. This is the number that's required to run the schools. It's, and we have to decide as a community, what do we value? I'm alr, I'm already having. A lot of trouble reconciling these cuts, both, you know, from the students' needs. And from the taxpayers' needs and future costs. I believe the costs are gonna go up because of these cuts, but. You know, if we can reduce the budget another one point three million dollars if we're, if we're prepared to eliminate. Physical education, band and course, world language, all electives. Have parents pay one hundred percent user fees and lose all athletic program. Is that the kind of district we want? Talk about a death spiral. No one would wanna move to a district that doesn't have these programs. Our property values would decrease. And we're, I, I believe we're already in a death spiral because we keep stepping over other sources of revenue. This is a revenue problem, not a budget problem.
I, I, I think it's a bit of both, but can I just say what, and I'm gonna, it's a shitty situation. Right? For everybody, for the taxpayers, for the school committee, for the kids, for the teachers, everybody, to put it bluntly. Nobody wants to be here having these conversations. You know, what I wanna do is I want to move forward. And we've been trying to build this relationship between these two boards for a number of years now. I think we're making some progress on it, but we're still butting heads a lot over opinions from the town side, from the school side. My hope is that this. Catastrophe really. Helps us work together to realize the burden on the taxpayers from both the town side and the school side. And we work together in the future more sharing capital plans. Sharing our budgets earlier, working together and listening to each other. In a way that we can still debate and have these conversations, but not make it an us and them thing. And what we would like to do tonight, my board, would be to. Have this conversation, have a motion that will support these articles because we see the reduction. We don't like it, but it's, it's the nature of the beast at the moment. No one's happy about this, but. You know, we, we need to move forward with this and get through town meeting and get these votes, get this budget passed. And, and move forward, but I hope that moving forward. We can come together a lot more often and have similar opinions and if they're different, respect each other's opinions. And do our best and, and for the school committee side. And for me, it, it is a revenue issue as well. It's a big one. We've had a lot of opportunities over the years. Where the town has had a, a potential revenue stream and it's gotten voted down by the citizens. And that's through development and industry and other things like that. And, and people don't want the character of the town to change. I fully understand that, but without these changes, this town will die. And I'm, I'm being serious. This town cannot sustain these increases with the school budget and town budgets with no revenue stream. The burden can't be on the taxpayers' property tax. People won't wanna move in the town because the property tax is gonna force people out that are here. People aren't gonna wanna move in. The school district is gonna lower its, its rankings. It's, it's a spiral. We need to do smart growth and people need to accept a little bit of change to help that revenue stream. So I would ask all the school committee members to talk to your constituents and tell them, listen. If we wanna keep our teachers in our school at this high standard, we need to make some changes in town. They can be for the better. We can do this. Smartly. We don't have to build high rises in town, but we need to get some revenue streams and be open to those revenue streams.
We've said that in your school committee meetings now. We've said that in a few school committee meetings now that it's. Yeah, we've made exactly your point.
Right, this back and forth arguing, it, it doesn't do us any good.
Don't forget about shared services. That's an opportunity too, that the schools might be able to help themselves. A little bit of a bad taste in our mouth about that, cuz. We had a shared service with Hamilton and then they abruptly canceled it with maintenance and stuff. So we, we were in with this like maintenance and landscaping thing and then all of a sudden we're like. And they were like, what? Now we have to add that to our budget too? So.
Let's reopen those talks.
That didn't happen for me.
I think that's the reason you're here, Joe.
Type of thing that Sean's talking about that. Dialogue cuz you saw we're cutting back on an H R person. Every, the town and the schools really have sort of a need around that, right? We're cutting back on an I T person. We've helped the town of Hamilton with our I T to do their phone system, so there's. That kind of thing is a possibility, but we don't necessarily always see all the options because we're not. Talking to each other. Right, so.
Can I just add one thing? Talking about shared services, maybe it's something for the selectmen to talk with one of them. It may be becoming a two town, a two town as opposed to two separate towns and that way you have shared. You have shared services. As Jean always says, you have one, one town and then you have control over our budget and you guys can decide. So that's something, putting it back on you as selectmen, because I think we as school committee people. Are, are doing our best. I really do. But again, no revenue.
Honestly, if you think about it, one town, school district becomes a department. And you can manage the budget.
So what do we do in, in the meantime though? What, what do we do?
That Joe and I spoke about just a little bit and actually Julie from pretty much the first time I, she walked through the door. Has been saying that. You really should review your regional agreement like every five years or so. And so we tried to do that, but we weren't really successful because there was just a lot of issues coming in that weren't related to the schools. But I think. There's opportunity to sit around and have. You know, I know that Manchester Essex will talk about, they built their district by building a building. And it was the regional agreement that helped them to all come together and sort of build a new district. Cuz it's really difficult when you have two cultures coming together. So maybe that's a way to sort of build. More understanding between everybody is through. Creating a regional agreement that's more fitting to where we are now than when it was first written. Which was sort of in an emergency time. It was like Wenham's kids had to leave Beverly and it was good for Hamilton and. So they came together and they built the high school and they did a whole bunch of stuff at that time. And it was a crisis actually that allowed that development to happen. So, you know, it might be a time when this is. Ripe for that kind of discussion, so.
Absolutely agree with Michelle. I, I did bring it up to her and I brought it up to Julie and Julie's brought it up to me and. Once we get through, you know, in Hamilton on Saturday and Wyndham, it'll be on July eleventh. Once we get through this. Managing what we're gonna look like for budgets next year. I definitely think that, you know, we need to. School committee, boards of selectmen of both towns need to establish some kind of a committee and start working on the regional agreement. It just, it can't wait.
But, but in, in the meantime, we need to get back to the main issue of the tax increase that this. Increase in the school budget will. Occur to, to our residents. I, I, I just find that just an outrageous increase in taxes. It doesn't mean I don't love kids. As I said, I have two nephews in the school system, but we need to think about. That the burden on the taxpayer and that people are without jobs, people are taking. Taking salary cuts. This is not something that we can just. It's the elephant in the room and we do need to address it. How, and, and I've not heard anything tonight. I. I understand all the issues. I adore our kids. But I also know that. You can't get blood from the stone. And, and so what do we do about this? We go ahead and say. Sure, well, we're gonna ask for, for these two articles to, to be passed. That seems unfair to the town as a whole. And, and how do we meet the needs of the children in our school while, while not overburdening our taxpayers? That's, that's a real question. That's a real question.
In interest of time, yes, but also you have to. How do we ma, manage the whole budget? So there needs to be a coming together of how do we manage the whole budget and not just, it's not the town, the school. How do we manage the whole budget so that those things are controlled?
Well, you have an important.
We need, we need to sort of get back on track here on what this is, is actually about, right? Talking about how we're gonna solve. The town, you know, funding problem. It wasn't part of the agenda tonight, so. You know, I definitely think that this is a discussion that we do need to sort of keep moving on in the future, right? Because I, I, I do. You know, as I said, everything you just said. Rosie was, is, is represented in our board, right? Every, every, every single person that you just sort of, just said about. You know, citizens in our town are represented on our board. So these are discussions that we have been having. Excuse me, and we do understand the financial burden laid solely, you know, basically on the backs of the taxpayers here. You know, unfortunately, that's beyond the purview of what the school committee does, right? So that's a much bigger conversation for another time. So at this point, you know, what I really want to do is just sort of see where the board stands. Is the, are you still planning on moving forward with two motions on Saturday? Uh, two, yeah. So two articles on Saturday.
Yes, we are.
Okay, and so the purpose of this meeting. Is so that you guys can get clarity around where the budget is gonna be, so you guys can make your. Vote so that you can know what you're gonna have as a recommendation at town meeting, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, two things. One is we wanted to sort of talk to you so we could make a recommendation. Number two is we want to understand what your cuts were. Cuz we, we asked you to make cuts, you did. It was not of our ask, but it was still a cut to the budget. So the two things, and, and the third thing is I, I need to understand the mechanism. If two, two passes. Two dash three doesn't pass and Wyndham passes, like. Has someone done like the little flow chart to tell me what happened to your budget? If we pass two, two, we don't pass two, three, and then Wyndham, like what happens to you guys? Where do you go from there?
Any no is a, any no is a no.
The whole budget.
No one two, three fails the budget even before Wyndham gets a chance to vote. And the school committee will have to start their budget over again, understanding what the town's willingness is at that point.
I, I realize that. I wanted sort of, I think people are listening to understand that. It doesn't just mean their budget's less. It means it's a failed budget. So I just wanted you guys to.
In the best interest to do as much as we can to get to a yes now. Because a failed budget means another town meeting. It means another. Bringing people together in large group. Which is probably not in the best interest of the communities in general. How are the schools going to have classrooms if, if it's even dangerous to, to gather to vote?
Darcy, we, Darcy, we really can't debate that tonight. That's not what we're here to debate. We're here to debate. They need a bucket of money to run the district and. And, and that's what we're here to debate and we can't sit here. We don't know what it's gonna look like, but it's not gonna be cheaper than this now. It's not gonna be cheaper. We know that.
We're not gonna know by Saturday either. We're budgeting in uncertainty right now.
But to circle back to Joe's original idea and thanks for all of your input. Would it be safe to assume that if the state came in with their full funding? Instead of the cutback they've suggested earlier, but if they came with their full funding. Would Hamilton recognize either through the E and D or a give back? The six hundred thousand dollars or so that we're looking at. The increase being if, when, when it was originally proposed that the state was cutting the one point three million. Does that make sense?
The answer is yes, but it wouldn't be. For until F Y twenty three.
Right, it would have a, a skip basically.
There would be no decrease in our tax assessment, I think is what I'm understanding for, for this year, is that right?
Well, yeah, that's, that's the policy, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But from what I've heard from the state, they're thinking that this. Could go on a few years, so that could be a good thing to have that sort of. Coming down the pike.
The state doesn't even have a past budget themselves. I mean. They're budgeting month by month, right?
Budget month by month until we know more about what's going on. For example, it would be a one twelfth of the two point two and two point three. It would, it would, the one twelfth budget would include the eight point two five percent. Excuse me. That's what Marissa put into your application for a one twelfth budget, but that is not what the D S, D S E has approved for us. We do not. DES has approved for us, we do not have that number yet. But we anticipate it not being what Marissa had said.
Okay.
But the thing is, when the state is doing their one twelfth budget.
Yep.
They get to put in an increase, when we're doing our one twelfth budget.
Marissa said it would be a one twelfth plus budget, so it could be a much greater number. It would, it would vary month to month until we could get more information from the state and, um.
It varies, it varies month to month based on what, you know. What the expenses in a given month are, some months have different expenses than others. It goes up and down, yeah, but the one twelfth budget is based on one, a minimum of one twelfth of the previous year's budget. Um, so it'd be, it'd be based off the FY twenty budget at a minimum one twelfth of that, but it can be more and generally would be.
At the FY twenty budget, we've been putting out the, this out there, trying to make it very clear, we'd be operating at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a month deficit.
But we keep up the one twelfth to cover that, just to get us started and going again. But that's not how the one twelfth budget works for us, for us, it's not, it's a one twelve spending cap. It's a spending cap.
They can't spend more than that.
Gave us an extra million dollars, we could not spend it.
My, my problem with the one twelfth budget is that it's not a one twelfth budget, it is a, it is permission from the state to spend in excess of, of appropriation. That's all it is, so the last time we appropriated money was last annual town meeting in April of twenty nineteen, that's what we were allowed to spend. Beyond July first, we don't have an authorization from town meeting to spend money, so if we don't get one, the state can authorize us to spend. A certain amount every month based on what our most recent past budget was, it's not a one twelfth budget, it's a, it's. Permission to spend more money than you've been allowed to appropriate, that's it.
Well, you're talking about if it fails.
Right.
If it fails a town meeting.
Right.
Either, in, either town.
Already, because Wyndham did not schedule a town meeting till July one, the school district already will be operating within a wealth one twelfth budget for the month of July.
Okay.
That's already a fact because Wyndham chose to wait till after June thirtieth to schedule their town meeting.
Right, whether it passes at Hamilton or not.
Correct, right. Or even if it passes in Wyndham, it's still.
Right.
So I just wanted to point out one other thing that people may be aware of, but that the town of Hamilton, I can't speak for Wyndham, but the town of Hamilton has cut its budget by five percent. And, um, our town services took some hits, so, so we understand that it's hard to, to cut budgets. Um. Sometimes it's just necessary is my point in all this. No, no matter how much you want it not to be so.
Our budget and our services are taking a hit, we're not gonna be able to provide as much. Reading tutorial services to struggling readers in elementary school. And we're not gonna be able to provide as much supervision in our preschool classrooms to students who have social, emotional. Physical, medical needs and we're not gonna be able to provide. Education in languages to the students of Hamilton Wyndham at the sixth grade level, which is the time when your brain is most. Prime to learn those things, so we too are making cuts.
And that's actually what we're going to be doing next as we wrap up this conversation.
Um, Hamilton Board of Selectmen, if the school committee would allow us, are you ready to take a vote? They would allow us a couple minutes here?
You wanna wait and see what budget they pass before you take your vote?
That, that would be helpful for me.
Okay, okay.
I, I mean, I just wanna say to David's point earlier. Cutting money from a school, from, from the school, from the school. Directly impacts, you know, our most vulnerable. Population, which is kids and can have a lasting impact. And we're talking about a time when I think kids are gonna come back extremely traumatized. And, you know, during a time when I think more than ever, services are going to be needed and are not gonna be available to them. Right, and it's important to remember that.
I know a lot of school districts have had to deal with the same thing, I, I totally understand that.
But, but having, like pointing out that other school districts are ma- are managing this too isn't really helpful.
Yeah, it's not relevant to our problem today, that's great that they're doing it, but we, we have very specific issues. Very specific solutions here, Rosemary, and to talk in generality with no solutions is not productive to the conversation, we need to bring solutions. And not comparisons, so that.
I guess I'm talking about, I'm, I'm trying to highlight the need that. Ma- so many, many other school systems have had to cut. And I, I don't have the answer as to how you would cut, what you would cut, how you would salvage. Um, the, the problems that would arise from that, um, I am very sympathetic.
Uh, I, I understand, you know, I, I wanna thank all your time, if you guys aren't gonna vote for it tonight, I, I'd like to wrap up this conversation so we could actually.
Listen to you, sure.
On, um, you know, actually making these cuts because. You know, our district is in the middle of making cuts as well, right, so.
Finish your meeting, we wanna stay on for like five minutes after your meeting and take a vote, okay?
Good, because I think Julie's gonna need a sw- small recess from us to work up some numbers, so.
Okay, so, um, I'm sorry, I actually had to jump out of the room for a few minutes, um, as the conversation transferred. Over, um, so we. Wrapped up, so we, have we wrapped up the actual budget and then?
Was about to present the capital budget.
Okay.
I thought maybe, maybe.
I think we were on to the motions.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so yeah, so we're gonna, uh, go here, you know, we'll read the motions, we'll ask for a second. And then we'll open each individual, open a, you know, a for discussion.
Okay, um, motion one, um, I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee vote to authorize the Assistant Superintendent. Of Finance and Administration to utilize any remaining FY twenty fund balance. To prepay FY twenty-one out of district special education tuitions.
Second.
So who's that, uh, Stacy? Thank you, Stacy, um, so opening this up to discussion, I just wanna begin by saying. Really, the fact that we just moved out of that conversation and into this first. Um, motion is really just showing the. You know, sort of creativity of how we are thinking about, you know, reducing the financial burdens or how we can actually. Um, you know, take these monies and, and this is gonna, you know, hopefully free up some money for us to sort of. Um, pay for some unexpected. You know, anything that comes up unexpected next year as the school year goes in.
Rosemary was talking about, like, is taking the savings that we got from this year from the building not being open. And applying it to something that. Is an unusual thing that the state law allows us to prepay and that it. Can help our position so that we don't have to tap any extra money. God willing, for the additional, um. Expenses to open school.
Yeah, you know, and I mean, I, I just think it's important because I, I know. You know, speaking for myself and I'm sure all of you have gone through it too, you know, just about anyone you come through in town. Has an idea and like how to cut, you know, save costs and whatnot, and we're like, no, we've, we've discussed that, we, we, we talked about that, you know, and. Um, it, it's been a long three months, you know, and, and this is really just sort of goes to show that. Um, you know, we're, we're already really, we have a bunch of very, very, very intelligent people who know what they're doing and. You know, trying, trying to come up with creative solutions on, on trying to, uh, give the greatest educational experience we can in these towns. And, you know, do it at a reasonable price.
Right, and we're not putting the money here because we won't know what that amount is until the end of the school year, cause we have to run all of our money. But, um, you know, this, and we don't really have to vote to do this. Um, but I had, you know, Vinnie had talked about it and I had said to Vinnie, you know, in the past, this had been done and like people didn't really know about it. So just for the purposes of transparency.
Right.
Let's just go this route with it, um, but, you know, he will. Do whatever the amount is that's necessary and we'll probably, we'll see that in our year end over the summer, so.
This is five hundred and forty thousand, right?
Uh, that, that's not the number, it's whatever the year ends with, so you gotta factor in Medicaid and factor in any, any other loss in revenue and. Any expenses that come up between now and the end of the year, so. That's just where we sit now, that, that will not be the number that.
As of, as of six seventeen.
Whatever it is, so.
I see, okay.
Vinnie, what is, um, savings for prepaying?
There isn't any.
There's no discounts?
There's no discount, no.
Perfect.
Sadly.
That would be awesome.
It's sad. This year's rate instead of having to pay next year's rate or anything like that at all?
Uh, no, so if it, it so happens that the OSD hasn't certified the out of district, uh, daily rate. We would, we would be billed after the fact for the difference, so either way, we have to pay for it.
And no difference between collaboratives or, um, private? Out of district?
The only difference is the state allows three months for private and one year for collaboratives, but other than that, there's no difference.
And is this, could this money be used to save positions? I don't think so, right?
Yeah, cause it's this year's money.
Well, we don't know. It's this year's money, but we also don't know how much it is yet, so.
Okay.
You can't prepay salaries.
Nope.
Correct, this is the only thing you're allowed to prepay as far as I know.
Yeah, it's pass, pass a special law just so we could pay for the buses.
Yeah. Well, I think this is smart to do, so.
Yeah. David, are you still here?
I am right here, I was just making sure everyone was done, uh. Discussing. So thank you, Michelle. Stacy Mathernick?
Yes.
Kai Prima? You're a mute type.
Yes.
Uh, Peter Walsick?
Yes.
Cheryl Bailey?
Yes.
Phil Horgan?
Yes.
Dean Lee?
Yes.
And David Pliego's a yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, second motion, um, I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee vote to adopt the FY twenty-one total general fund expenditures. Budget of thirty-five million, seven hundred twenty thousand, one hundred ten. This amount includes general fund operating expenses after offsets in the amount of thirty-five million. Three hundred six thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight and general fund debt service expenses in the amount of four hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty-three. Furthermore, the gross operating expenses of the district before offsets in the amount of thirty-seven million, twenty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-two. Have been allocated to, um, to the DESI defined chart of accounts according to the summary by DESI category. Chart included in this budget presentation dated six seventeen, twenty twenty.
Second by Stacy Mathernick.
Thank you, Stacy, so, uh, any discussion?
Just to be clear, what we're voting here. Is pretty much the same thing we. Voted for before, except for now we're voting on that DESI chart.
Correct.
So what, so does this mean by voting yes that we're voting the reductions, cause the reductions are in the chart?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you wanted to change the reductions. This is where somebody would amend the motion.
So.
Change the reductions, how, you mean, s- certain cuts that you disagree with would?
As long as you either have a dollar value to replace that with or you're suggesting budget by less.
But I, I. Curious as to the conversation surrounding. The rumors of. You know, the, the state aid not being decreased, right, so, so that doesn't mean. That doesn't mean that everything on that one point two has the possibility of, of being fully funded. But. You know, i- i- I don't know, i- i- it's, it's, it's. It's tough, I, I, cause I, and, and here, and here's the hard part, right, is I, I don't think even if we said, tried to change this number. It would necessarily. Save. Many of the cuts, if any. I, I, I think it makes more sense to have. A little bit of wiggle room in our budget for unforeseen. And I, and, and I hate saying that, but that's the only reason I'm even sort of toying with the idea. Uh, because I also, I don't like working, e- even though we sort of made the cut on speculation that it was gonna be a twenty percent. I, I think that's being fiscally prudent, which, which is, we just went through forty-five. Minutes and discussing, you know, the, the fiscal prudence of our, um. Committee, they, and, and I think that's sort of that. Making that initial cut, you know, on the assumption that we're not getting that money in was in fact. Um, very tough, but fiscally prudent thing to do, so, you know, that, that's sort of my thought process, I, it's obviously not well formed. Um, and, um, I'm open, it can be easily swayed one way or the other, I think, on this. Because, you know, um, the. Yeah, I think this is a really difficult decision for all of us and. Just the, I, trying to figure out, you know, for the past couple of months, how we can actually not make these reductions. Um. Has been, you know, weighed so heavily on all of us. And, you know, so that this is really hard to sort of fi- make a final vote for. Uh, that's where, that's where I am.
Well, may I just clarify something, if, so let's say. If I disagreed that we should be laying off the ELATAs at the elementary school. I disagree that we should be laying off the, the technicians. Um, I disagree with losing language, I would have to have those numbers. And amend this motion to increase the budget by that amount?
Yeah, uh, so that, that, that's what, you know, where we are right now, um.
You would actually be increasing the budget by that amount to restore.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I would, we'd have to increase the budget by that amount.
Yeah.
Cause.
Sorry.
Sorry, Vinnie, I just don't think I can vote for a budget that. That's going to hurt our students and end up actually costing us more in the long run.
You have a motion, Peter, that you wanna amend?
Yeah, but I don't, the problem is I don't have the numbers, I know it's a hundred and forty. Yeah, I don't know what it would, the numbers for, let me go back to, hold on, I have the document open right here, she.
The TAs is seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Yeah, um. The four.
I mean, Peter, you, you can amend the motion to restore those positions that you want to see. Right?
I can just say, I amend the motion to.
No.
I make a motion to.
We need to rework the number.
I'm sorry, what?
We would have to rework the number. So why don't you tell Vinnie what it is you're looking for and he can calculate it?
I see, well, I see the, the. The ELATAs at seventy-four, nine forty-eight. The maintenance technicians at. Where were they on the list? The two maintenance technicians, maintenance workers, seventy, seventy-eight, eight thirty-five.
Yep.
Is that the actual number though, don't we have to increase that because of the unemployment?
Uh, it's gonna take me a minute, I, I, I have to redesign the whole DESI chart of accounts and redo everything.
Him a number for the purpose of making a motion? Cause it, there's no reason to redesign the DESI chart if it doesn't pass.
Uh, it, it would be the seventy-four, the numbers you just read, that's, that's what it would be.
And what was the other thing, Peter?
Well, the ELATAs, um, at the elementary school, the. Maintenance technicians, cause honest to God, I think we'll be paying contractors six times more what we're paying these folks. And we'll end up in a deficit, um.
Is that it?
Yeah, fina- yeah, yeah. They all hurt, but I think the ELATAs hurt the most. And the budget, I think, is going to hurt. We're going to be in a deficit by losing the technician.
So that's a hundred and fifty three, seven eighty three.
Yep.
Fifty three, so one fifty three, seven eighty three?
Yep.
So I just make a motion to increase the budget by a hundred and fifty three thousand, seven hundred and eighty three dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Said motion is made.
Do you have a second? All right, I have no second on the motion. So the motion fails.
Thank you.
So I I I appreciate what you did there, Peter. I think everyone here does.
I just think we're we're going to end up paying, we're going to hurt these students who are already who are already struggling readers. It's going to be exponential. They're going to have a learning gap from this year. They're going to have a learning gap next year. And we're going to end up it's just going to have a ripple effect throughout their academic and professional lives. And actually cost us more money and services later on. And the technicians, we are going to be paying about six times more than we pay currently for the same services.
And I I can appreciate that, and I can appreciate the fact that you now have that on record. So, you know, years from now, if and when that those do come to fruition, you know, people can look back and 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 say that 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 was here. And and at the same time, I don't think anyone here is going to argue that with you. It it's a, you know, um. We know it it's it's balancing. It it it's tough. And this is what I was talking about with, you know, e- even that that chapter seventy funding i- i- is, you know, what are you paying for long term and short term savings? You know, but I mean, we we just had a very robust conversation with the Board of Hamilton who uh, you know, Board of Selectmen in Hamilton, who, you know, really I don't want to speak for them, but really kind of think that we're still asking for too much. You know, um, so i- it's tough. It's this isn't really what I signed up for.
We're we're entering into death spiral.
Right. So do we have any other discussion?
Um, Vinnie?
Yes.
We were going to take some money out of E and D in order to have it available in case of an emergency. Because we are not able to access that money after June thirtieth. Is this the place where that happens?
Uh, this is the last opportunity you would have to do it unless we're meeting next week.
No, I guess, no. I- is the mechanism for that to increase the budget by that amount? What's the mechanism for that?
Uh, you would increase the contribution of E and D, which would change the numbers on this motion. Uh, it would decrease the the three numbers you have here.
Why?
Uh, because, yep.
Apply it to assessment.
I'm sorry, say that again.
These numbers would only change if we were going to apply it to assessment, right, versus having it held aside for some unknown emergency? Is that right?
So I are you saying that you want to increase the overall budget but offset it by E and D so it doesn't change the the assessment?
I'm wondering. That's my question. Is this the place where we would do that?
Yes.
Okay, so I think people should just understand that if you if you wanted to in any way, shape, or form use E and D, this is the time to do it. I'm not a hundred percent sure we're I'm not a hundred percent convinced we need to. I feel like we have enough money at this point in our budget for emergencies. I'm praying that the federal and state government does the right thing. If they mandate us to do things, that they'll provide funding. But I just want to make sure everybody else is comfortable with that.
Can I ask i- i- is emergencies, is there a certain category? Um, or is it just a?
I was thinking it would be like, you know, there was like some sort of need to buy modular, buy modular classrooms or something like that, but.
So but, Michelle, and and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is a question that a a- at this point, right, if we, and Vinnie, I guess it's for you too, um, if we were to actually roll E and D into our operating budget, that's money we'd end up having to make up next year, right? So that's like, that's where you all of a sudden start the year at a one, you know, uh, one or two percent increase, right? So like like what happened this year, it happened with that six hundred thousand dollar deficit. Um, you know, so I just think that especially for sets of optics, right? Because I i- i- is very hard for sort of people to understand that the, you know, we did start this year in that hole, and that's why our eight point five percent ask seems so extraordinarily high. Um, to do that again next year, it um, you'd be sort of banging your heads against the wall. Now, my other part of this question is, um, should that emergency come up like, you know what, we are going to need to get some modular stuff? Can't we access that at that time if there's no in 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 no, we can't have. See, you're shaking your head.
Well, not certified, so it might not. We it might not be available again until like December or something.
Oh, okay. All right, all right, all right. All right, because then.
My way. I add a couple clarifying points. Um, so David, if you were to choose to do that, to have like a COVID response, you know, fund, if you will, using pulling E and D into your FY twenty one budget, you would use it if you needed it. Right? And so if you didn't need it, then it'd be the same conversation you have every year with your fund balance at year end. You would eat, you would then put that up to the three percent, which you've decided as a school committee is your max into E and D, right back into E and D. It wouldn't immediately be available because then it has to be certified, like Michelle was explaining earlier. You wouldn't have it until two fiscal years later. But that would be the process for that. And then if your chapter seventy funding came in level funded, which would be about seven hundred thousand dollars more than what you're currently planning for, if you approve this as is, you would have access to that if you needed it. Of course, it's all like if, 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 because we are working in just a world of massive unknowns. But that would give you more agility if you were able to have access to that. If there was some immediate crisis, the roof blew off a school, then you would go to your Board of Selectmen. You would say you need to access E and D, and the Board of Selectmen would decide if you need to have a town meeting to authorize that the access of that funding or not. They could also decide to not hold a town meeting, which means you would then, by way of no action, be able to utilize the money for that crisis or emergent situation.
Okay, that second part of what you said is what I was asking about, and that first part is something I didn't even know about or or hadn't even thought about.
Yeah, so what we just need to be clear about here is there's money there. If there's an emergency, there's some like weirdness around it. And this is where the trust is going to have to come in between us and the selectmen. And if there's true need, we're going to need to talk more about what that is. So in both towns, both select town boards, yeah.
So would this be the proper avenue for that, or would that be a different motion about accessing that and creating? Could that have to roll into? So this is what they obviously I always get turned around and talking about E and D.
It would be here. The issue is do we want to do it now, or do we want to wait and trust that if there is a need, that everyone's going to work together? I would have that, but I it all, you know, because I'm the one who's been talking about E and D. I feel like I we need to just clear the deck on what that is.
Well, you know, and 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 I and I appreciate that, Michelle, because I think if I've ever, you know, talked about E and D, this is the time and place to have the the big discussion. A- and I'm really going to throw this at our resident experts here in Julie and Vinnie and getting some guidance for you on what you suggest. I know, but I do know that you don't like the idea of ever sort of touching E and D, Vinnie, and I can appreciate that, but um, you know, a- a- as the the expert in the room, you know, how you would suggest that we handle that to give us the most flexibility for next year.
I mean, so i- is the concern for a COVID response? Because that's why you just made the motion on the prepaying of tuitions. So this is almost doubling down on that, which.
Yep.
You know, obviously, we don't know what's going to happen, but it might be an overreach.
Perfect.
No, I I thank you. That's exactly what I was, you know, looking for. You're whatever mess we get into come July, you know, July one is sort of on you. So this is really what we can do as a board to, you know, give you the best working room to to do what you do so well for us in our district. So, you know, it it's it's really sort of, y- you you are the one that I want to know how you feel about that.
And remember, if this goes more than one budget cycle, we're not replenishing E and D at the end of this year because we're going to use it for tuitions. So if you wrap it up in next year's budget, there will not be anything to offset FY twenty two. And in fact, it'll increase about two hundred and fifteen thousand, because that's what's in E and D this year. So right off the bat, the towns would have to come up with that unless something changes with the state revenue, obviously.
Awesome. Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Is everyone else satisfied? All as satisfied as you can be, I guess. Okay, uh, Jean Lee?
Yes.
Stacy Metternich?
Yes.
Ty Prima?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey?
Yes.
Michelle Horian?
Yes.
And David Platoz, yes. I got everyone, right? Uh, Peter?
Yeah.
Like sorry, I my usual going down the list is now like populated with Hamilton Board of Selectmen, so. But I got everybody correct.
Did you get?
Uh, no, you missed. You missed me.
I'm sorry, Peter.
No worries. Um, I'm voting no, because it should be more.
No, I understand. Thank you.
The Hamilton Board of Selectmen needs a little bit of this airtime now, I believe. Is this the right time, Joe, or do you need? We need to do one more thing, Julie?
More things.
One thing.
For tighten.
Okay, um, I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee vote to assess the towns of Hamilton and Wenham a combined total of thirty two million, eighty eight thousand, five hundred thirty two as the amount necessary to operate and maintain the district as well as pay debt service for FY twenty one. The district's assistant superintendent shall determine the amount apportioned to each town, and the district's treasurer shall certify such amounts to the respective treasurers of each town within two days of this date.
Second by Stacy Metternich.
Um, any discussion? This is actually just the assessment to the towns based off the last slide.
So, yeah, uh, uh, even though I disagreed with the other number, the number that passed, this just assesses the towns. So there's no sense in me voting no on this.
All right, Peter, why don't we start with you?
Yes.
Stacy Metternich?
Yes.
Jean Lee?
Yes.
Ty Prima?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey?
Oh, Bailey, yes.
And David Platoz, yes. Okay, the final motion.
Okay, um, I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee vote to eliminate the following positions. Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment, Elementary Literacy Administrator, Elementary Mathematics Administrator, two maintenance positions, Human Resource Benefits and Payroll Administrator.
Second.
Thanks, Stacy. Michelle, thanks for reading that. I know that was hard. This is a really the the re- the the reality o- of the situation we're in now, right, and for everyone at home. You know, just seeing everything on on paper now, it just it just makes it that much more real. These are key key people to our district.
Yeah, and can and it's can I say something?
Of course, of course.
Um. You know, each of these people had a job in our district. Each of these people did a job in our district. Each of these people improved our district. Um. I was personally responsible for hiring the elementary mathematics. I was on that search committee at that time, and I know that when we brought those district um administrators in, they they changed sort of the way Wednesdays were held and, you know, helped to organize things, and we've had some. So we have to keep in mind that each one of these people did a job in our district and that we're not going to have that anymore. And that some of these things are things that we really wish we could keep. Um, and we'll probably try and replace at some point, because when we go to build, we're going to need people to help build the curriculum again. So we want to thank them for their service to us, and we want to thank them for everything they did. And we want them to know that they'll be missed. Um, that we're sorry this is happening to them and their families.
Their expecte- expertise is going to be missed the most. I really think this is going to hurt the district again, and where where this is going to cost us more in the long run. I mean, I can't put dollars amount on the Director of Curriculum, the Literacy Administrator, the uh, Mathematical Administrator, Human Resource Benefits, and Payroll Administrator. I I can't put numbers on those. I just know it's going to cost us more in the long run, hurt education. Uh, I could put numbers on the maintenance position. We, you know, we pay these folks, you know, twenty five bucks an hour uh, for their ex- vast expertise, their breadth and the depth of their expertise. And I know we can't, they can't do plumbing and electrical um, and HVAC. None of them, none of them hold those licenses. But, you know, when you look at everything else that's going to have to be done in our district, getting ready to open the schools, their expertise cannot just be passed off on custodians who may not have that expertise. We're going to have to hire contractors at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to come in and do this for us. Um, that's going to end up costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars um, to prepare our schools and to maintain them over the year. That's that's my position on this.
I would just like to add that all these positions are none of this is going to be good, especially for me, the the Human Resource and Benefits Payroll Administrator. It only means more work for all of us, and there's nothing I would really do to to try to keep that position. We've, you know, all these positions, we've we've tried everywhere and and looked in every place, so e- every one of them is going to be tough, especially the the last one on that list for me, so. But we have, you know, that's the reality.
Yep, because I only to bug you for a few more uh hours, I'm just going to remind you that this is not sustainable. You cannot maintain this. This is, um, the district will slide backward without the support.
It it hasn't been an easy decision, and this isn't when I signed up for being on the school committee to do this kind of work and the hours we put in to try and figure out having any kind of budget. It really has been, if anybody realized how many hours we've been spending, especially in the last month, um, and we don't get paid that um, we are, these meetings, believe it or not, have been five hours, and we've been doing them weekly. This doesn't, the these decisions haven't come lightly.
Thanks, Stacy. Um, any other discussion?
Um, I just I just want to say, you know, I've been in town for twenty six years, a parent in the district for nineteen years. I work at the Accord Food Pantry. You know, I serve on the Hamilton Housing Authority. I under-
I understand who makes up our communities. And I understand the, the hardship that an increased tax rate will have on people in our towns. But what we're doing to our children is, is devastating. Um, and I know where, we have a revenue issue. Um, we're in a COVID pandemic, but this is, it, it's just not this last motion. It's the, it's the three prior motions, you know, are E, um, it's just, it's, it's horrible. It's horrible. So we, we have to work together. And, and we can't continue, you know. The school committee looking at the Board of Selectmen as, you know, trying to, you know, get everything out of us. And this, the selectman looking at us, um, as, as spend, you know, just spending without any regard. For our people in our community, because we do care, we do understand, we know who's in our community. So that's it.
I just want to say, I want to thank them for their service to the district and to the kids. This is not an easy decision, and I don't think it's anything, I don't think any one of us. Do so without a heavy heart. Cause this is not right.
All right, guys, uh, put this to a vote then. Stacy Metternich?
Yes.
Peter Wolsick?
No.
Ty Primo?
Yeah, yes.
Jean Lee?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yep.
Michelle Bailey?
Yes.
And David Plato's a yes.
So is it time for a school committee recess and a Board of Selectmen meeting?
Yeah. That'd be great. I, I could use a second. Did you guys want to, uh? Make your motion now?
So, um, at the last meeting, the, uh, right before this one, the Board of Selectmen had a, uh, had, it began discussions about a motion for Article two dash two. That motion was tabled procedurally now. Um, somebody can move to take that motion off the table?
I move to take that motion off the table.
Second.
Okay, just to recite for the record, the, uh, the motion at that, what time was for, uh, made by Bill Olson and seconded by Sean Farrell. For fa- for a favorable recommendation from the Board of Selectmen on Article two dash two. So Jeff, you're, you're the chair.
Okay. Any further discussion on this, guys?
Let me just, I just think we saw what hard work they did and what tough decisions they made. And I think we need to get this school district moving forward in the right direction, start good dialogue with each, with these committees. But I'm prepared to vote in favor of the, uh, the budget.
Roll call vote.
Thanks, Bill. All right, uh, Sean?
Sean Farrell, aye.
Bill?
William Molson, aye.
Darcy?
Darcy Dale, aye.
Rosemary?
I'm muted, Rosie.
Sorry about that. Rosemary Kennedy, aye.
Jeff Hubbard, aye. Okay, accept a motion for two dash three.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article two dash three.
Second that motion.
Okay, further discussion?
I mean, just echo it. I mean, it's, it's, it's the same, for me, it's the same budget. It's all one of the same. School district needs both budgets to pass. And, um, you know, I, I think that it needs more work. This is not the be, this is not the end of this discussion. This is the beginning of the discussion. So I welcome the leadership coming in. Um, I thank the, uh, current leadership. I look forward to, to continue the conversation with next leadership. And, um, and I enjoyed listening to your discussion tonight, and thank you guys for your, um, your hard work and the hard decisions you had to make.
So, anyone else? Okay, uh, why don't we start off, uh, Bill?
William Molson, aye.
Sean?
Sean Farrell, aye.
Darcy?
Darcy Dale, nay.
Rosemary?
Rosemary Kennedy, nay.
Jeff Hubbard, aye. Okay, we have one more. Uh, who is it, two dash four?
Yes, yeah, that's on the, uh, on the, uh. The capital expense for the schools.
Okay. Accept the motion.
Uh, I'm.
Four.
I move that we, um, recommend favorable action on two dash four.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, uh, Bill?
Uh, William Olson, aye.
Sean?
Sean Farrell, aye.
Darcy?
Darcy Dale, aye.
Rosemary?
Rosemary Kennedy, aye.
Jeff Hubbard, aye. Okay.
Yes, I am going to make a motion that we adjourn this evening.
Thank you.
I just, I, yeah, I just wanted to thank, I mean, I, I, so Joe, maybe correct me, but the last meeting for the school board, board committee today is, it was a Julie and, um.
Oh.
Is it Julie as well as, uh, Jean, the last meetings? So thank you very much. And this is also Jeff, uh, this is also Jeff, uh, Jeff Hubbard's last meeting too, so.
Jeff's last meeting, other than town meeting, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
So I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll say, I think on behalf of everybody, uh, we, uh, think you're all very lucky for going ahead and getting out of here. Jean Lee, I think that goes for you too.
Thank you, school committee, for, for allowing us to be a part of your meeting tonight and for the discussion.
And we look forward to many more of these together, so thank you.
Say that now, but you just.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta do roll call vote?
Yeah.
Yes. Darcy?
Darcy Dale, aye.
Rosemary?
Rosemary Kennedy, aye.
Jeff Hubbard, aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Joe, can you stand for just a quick second, so we can just, on Saturday?
Sure, sure.
On Saturday, someone has to go and present the budget. I'm assuming that's Julie, right? Is Vinnie going also?
Vinnie's on mute.
I think he, he and Julia, Dr. Kuckenberg are working on some numbers.
Me, either?
Yeah, I'm here, so, uh, on this Saturday, I, I was not.
Okay.
Okay, and then who from the school committee thinks they're going, because Joe can put a seat, so you guys are like together near Julie?
Yeah, I, I was gonna plan to, Joe, uh, when I was speaking with Michelle earlier, she had mentioned something. I was thinking of just coming for the school committee portion. Obviously, we're trying to keep sort of numbers down. Um, and I just want to make sure that like, if, you know, us Wenham residents that come to sort of support the district. Or, you know, any, any questions or whatever, if we left, that we wouldn't be, uh, you know, interfering, whether they are upsetting anything that you guys are planning on doing.
So a good couple of things to keep in mind, uh, this, we're gonna have a designated area for non-residents to sit anyway. But, um, even with that, your school committee members, and I'll probably try to make you, allow you to all sit together. We're, we'll be voting by electronic clicker at this year's town meeting, so registered voters in the town of Hamilton will get a clicker as they come in and check in. And those of you who are not Hamilton residents but are Wenham residents, you won't be able to vote because you won't have a clicker. So, um, uh, there shouldn't be any confusion around that. But yeah, I, I just need a hard number of, number of seats. I know I have five FinCom, five Board of Selectmen, myself, my Finance Director. Town Council and Town Clerk. Those are the two rows, the first two rows, I need to know how many more seats I need in the next, you know, row and a half. So that you guys can sit up front, so.
And now it's, uh, me, Jean, both Michelle's. Uh, Ty.
I should, I should be able to make it.
And then Stacy.
Probably be babysitting, so.
Ty, Ty's not gonna be there, okay? So one, two, three, four, five, six.
Three, four, five, six.
Okay, six, alright.
Ty will be there, it looks like Ty will be there.
Yeah.
Oh, Stacy won't, okay, Ty will be, okay. One, two, three, four, five, I, I'm counting seven. I've got Dave Plato, Julie Kuckenberger. Uh, Michelle Bailey, Michelle Horgan, okay, so, uh, seven with Julie, okay. And, uh, uh, David, unless you're gonna get up and talk, and don't, don't forget about Julie. She's taking, she's gonna have a lift for you guys on Saturday.
Nah, Wenham already hates me, why would I hate Hamilton hate me too?
And then, and then the other thing, Joe, we, um, do have a one-page sure that we're gonna approve here.
I'm hoping you get it to me tomorrow, and, you know, number of copies you need, we'll get them on the seats. I'll make sure they're on the seats already, and then we'll have an area for people who want to pick stuff up on the go-in too.
So they'll be delivered to you at the town hall?
Please, that'd be great.
And? The doors are open, or how, can you?
Town Hall, Town Hall is open to the public. We've been open for about two weeks now. Um, so we've, you know, we, social distancing, wear a mask when you come in, all that good stuff, but we're, we're open. We've been open for business for about two weeks.
And normal hours till four?
Yep.
Okay.
Right, so I just want to, I want to thank you all. I know that, uh, tonight's discussion was difficult. It's unfortunately the type of thing that we, uh, have to do in this, in this line of work, we have to have difficult decisions. Uh, I appreciate it. Uh, uh, I know that the Board of Selectmen, uh, appreciates it. They all fully endorsed having this conversation tonight. They all thanked us for reaching out to you and you, you reciprocating and saying that we could come. Um, I agree with Michelle Horgan earlier, you know, we, we have to stop being a little bit mistrustful of each other. I hope that this is one brick in the, in the new wall of, uh, a new foundation of trust between us. Because, um, you know, we're only gonna get, we're only gonna be able to move forward as a community and as a school district if we keep working together. So I'm looking forward to doing more of that, despite what Michelle says about me. Michelle Bailey says about me.
I say, which Michelle? Please. All I said about you is I can't pronounce your last name.
You're not the only one that says that.
Okay, cause if you knew what I said about him, that's, that's far worse, so that's good.
I'm gonna have to ask Stacy then.
Well, you know, thank you guys for coming and, uh, you know, we're definitely, we're definitely gonna take you up on the, uh, meeting more and, and trying to work together. Because we, we know what next year's gonna look like already, so let's start the talks now, so.
I, I, you know, I just, I'm, I'm looking at the chat here, it, it seems that some folks misplaced my trying to, uh, connect with you folks. As, um, you know, not being in the right frame of mind. I, I apologize, I don't mean any, uh, uh, disrespect or. Hard-heartedness by sharing a joke with you. I'm, I, my, my way of, has always been to try to laugh in tough times, try to find things to joke about.
No, I, I understand.
I'm sorry if I offended anybody with that. That was not my intent. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you. Be well, be safe.
So, yeah, I mean, it just to sort of. Piggyback on what Joe just said there, you know, uh, none of us are, of us are taking this. Lightly at all. Um, you know, I, I definitely had to shut my screen off for a couple of minutes. To recoup myself and, um, and I know, I, I know these people on my board, and I know how much this hurts them as well. So, um, I don't want that message to be lost. But moving on, um. We have, I sent out a one sheet for you guys right before the meeting started. Excuse me. Um, and of course, I can't find it right now. Oh, there it is. So basically, um, you know, as we spoke, this looks completely different than it did last week. The idea here is a reference guide on really our story. Right, so, um, the, the, the front section is just sort of telling the story about where we were in February, how we actually got to this. Um, place. Um, and, and there, there's a lot of information here. It's broken up into some bite-sized chunks, so people actually can understand. Um, I think tomorrow we'll have to go through, just triple-check the numbers on everything. Um, and it goes so far as to actually telling people really the tough things that we had to do making cuts. Um, then moving over to the back, it's actually, um, telling people what is going on. So the, um, top people in Hamilton up here, here's where you have your, um, town meeting. And what voting for both warrants two point three and warrant, uh, Article two point, I'm sorry, two point two and two point three. What a yes vote actually buys you, right? And it, and it actually gets you all of this and down to Wenham I do, you know, um. And it's so you can actually see all of the stuff that yes vote will buy you. And it also tells you what happens, what a no means, right? And, and this is really important to, uh, point out again and again, if either article fails, the entire budget fails. Right, so if two point two goes and said two point three gets voted down, that means everything gets voted down. It actually negates Wenham's, um, vote altogether. So this gives you all that information on, on what yes and no actually means. Um, again, it's the same thing for Wenham, right? And, uh, this number, the top number is actually the assessment for each town. So it's eleven million five hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred ninety-six for Wenham. And the seven hundred twenty-two thousand is actually the number, um, that Wenham has to put into. Um, in override, so it actually just denotes that down here. Again, this is telling the entire story of how we got there and just informs people. Of what needs to happen in order, it should actually be lines up here too. But the, um, what needs to happen in order for, you know, the school district budget to pass. If they, you know, want it to pass, and what it entails and what it would actually cost the district. In the towns if you voted no. And then the final thing down the bottom is actually just talking about, uh, the debt exclusions for the, um, you know, capital requests. And what that actually entails. So.
Up a little bit, so we can see what that capital debt part is. Thank you.
So this is all, actually all in your email as well.
David, the only thing that, it, it looks like in the yes side on Wenham, you have just a teeny bit of space left at the bottom. Is there, you could add, just say, see above, the way you say below?
Yep, I, in fact, you know, what I would do is I'd actually move it, um, to right before improved district safety and says, continue from.
Above, okay.
Yeah, or maintain existing district line.
May, may I ask you a question, may I ask you a question as well?
Yep.
Uh, on the Hamilton, on page two, Hamilton six twenty, on the no side. It says arch theater band and chorus are at risk. Aren't other pro, aren't there others as well?
Yeah, then, so the thought process with that was, um, just, we had so much feedback. When that sort of email had gone out, that, that, that's a very hot button issue that people care about. And, you know, the, and I wanted to sort of specify that, um.
Well, language as well. I don't know, I know there's no room in that box. I don't know how to, it, you can make it longer, I guess.
Right, yeah, there is room to do that.
I don't know if you want to add world like, world language.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the reality is, as much information is on here, you know, there, there's always so much you could fit on the eight, eight and a half by eleven. Because if a no vote means a hell of a lot more than this, what's it written in this box, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to be clear, world language, sports, um.
Can you do me a favor and just shoot me an email with that, just so I remember to do it in the morning, and I'm happy to add it.
Yeah, I mean, if everyone agrees, but I, I think that's important for people to understand the, the full scope of what a no vote means.
Actually forgot I have it up right here. I can change it real time.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just wondering if the way of saying that is like. Arts and music, uh, art, music, athletic programs and others, or, you know, I don't know. You have limited space, limited words, like, how much can you fit in?
Well, we're talking about high school electives, we're talking about world language, um. Athletic programming, it's deep, it's catastrophic. No one's gonna want to put their kids in a school district that doesn't have these, that teach the whole, the whole child.
So there's already, there's already a contingency of.
So there's already, there's already a contingency of people mobilizing to um, stop either a combination of the two warrants or to vote no on two, three anyways, right?
Yeah, we just.
Yeah, we, we need people to understand what no means.
Yeah.
Right.
No means that taxes are even gonna go higher because the property values are gonna drop, taxes are gonna go higher. It's, it's gonna be a death spiral, a no vote.
So can I just say there's a ton of information on this page, like a ton of information.
Absolutely, I typed it all, I know.
Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate that it's well organized and that it does communicate a, a message pretty well. Um, so that someone could really look at this in like two minutes and sort of get the picture. Um, so that's good. There are people who are gonna want a more detailed budget information that Vinnie I think is gonna put up on the website probably, right? Vinnie?
Yeah, I can put the line item detail up, definitely.
Yeah, that one you just sent out yesterday was, was pretty spot on, easily digestible.
Yeah, so some people want one level and some people just want the Cliff Notes version.
And, well, and remember, this is gonna be on the seat of their chair at town meeting, so it has to be quickly influential and understandable.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's perfect to be on the chair at town meetings so you can look at it quickly.
Yep. And there will be screenshots of that tweeted out probably as early as tomorrow morning if we approve it tonight.
Of this? Let me just change those few little wording things for you, so they screenshot the right one.
Part of it.
Really nice job. This is really great. I've, thank you.
I will admit to having my doubts.
I agree. I like the way it flows. It tells the story. It tells what the, the consequences are, yes versus no vote.
Thank you. Excuse me. This is sort of.
One pagers I've ever seen. So Julie, is there a color printer that's available to print these tomorrow or do we have to do like a Staples run?
We can print these in the office. I don't, it just depends. Sometimes the quality's not awesome. Um, I would wanna do a test run and just.
I could bang this out in black and white just as easily too, so.
I think the color helps tell the story though, David.
Oh, yeah, definitely, but it, it, it would still work if, if we had to just go that route.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it helped, the color, it just helps sort of break up the information.
I agree with that, you know, makes it easier to read.
Vinnie, can you send one to the printer in the business office and just see how it looks?
Yeah, definitely.
How many copies do we need?
Three hundred.
Three hundred?
Just for Hamilton.
Aren't there only a hundred and fifty seats?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean only a hundred and fifty people can come.
Oh, they're not, okay.
Because if they need extra, they're gonna use the stadium seats.
We ready to make a motion or?
I know, but that's the plan. I don't know that more than a hundred and fifty people will come, but that's what he told me the plan was.
I don't think a hundred are gonna go.
You don't think so?
Well, Jean Lee.
I think we need a hundred fifty.
We need a hundred fifty people there.
I think we need three hundred people there.
If you're watching this right now and you think it's really important that this budget passes, you and every person you know needs to be there.
Right. You got nothing else going on. No baseball, no soccer, no, nothing else.
Well, you might have indoor gymnastics.
Nope, those aren't running yet.
You know, we should, we should have.
People have baseball, actually. I do. Stacy's going out of state.
Oh, geez.
I have baseball every weekend now through the summer.
I thought we had one more week before that happened. Well, at least for the leagues I'm thinking of.
All right, we, we.
Updated the uh, I just said that with just to select those word changes that you said, or at least the ones I picked up.
Okay, um, so I make a motion that the Hamilton Wenham School Committee accepts the Hamilton Town Meeting one-page document uh, prepared for us uh by David Palito.
Second, Michelle Bailey.
Uh, any discussion? All right, Jean Lee?
Yes.
Uh, Ty Prima?
Yes.
So, uh, Peter Walczek?
Yes, and thank you.
From Stacy Madernick?
Yes.
I'm all over the place, I have no idea who I am. So, Michelle Morgan?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey?
Yes, thank you.
And David Palito's a yes.
Oh, thanks, Kristen.
Um, so I, I just printed it. It, it, it looks okay. The, the red looks a little pink, but other than that.
I could bang, I could change that on my end real quickly.
Other than that, it, it look, it looks good.
So what it looks like on the link or just like hold it up to the camera?
Are we allowed to use school resources for this or do we have to?
You can use school resources for this.
For this one, I can.
You're not.
Oh, okay, it's your, okay.
That's why some of the wording was specific.
At risk, I see, okay.
Do we want to try like maybe one that's in a school, like in the art department or something?
Yeah, Kristen Burge, uh. Just uh, um, the high school room one oh two.
Yeah.
Oh, Kristen Losi, I'm sorry. I was, had another screen on.
Kirsten. Yeah, that's great, Vinnie. I don't think I wanna put that out there.
Oh?
I don't think you want the business office printer to do it. The quality's really bad.
Okay.
No, I don't know how we would work out the high school one. Otherwise, we'll have to go to Staples and expense it.
I, I can do either. Um, if I can do it by tomorrow.
Literally, we can go to Staples and pick something up and drive it to the town hall because we're not getting paid and you are and have some work to do, Vinnie.
But at the high school, we've already paid for those supplies. You don't have to dish out any more money.
No, I know, but do we have access to the building at the high school though? I don't know if we do.
You don't.
Yeah, I, I can do that tomorrow.
Okay, let us know. We're happy to pick stuff up and drive it. There's no reason for you to do that unless you just wanna get out.
Yeah, I, I'm in town. Um, I finish at a court at around eleven, so I could buzz over and grab it from you, Vinnie.
You can send Staples an electronic file, the print it there.
It is expensive though, a two-sided, probably be thirty cents or more a sheet.
More than that, yeah. It's a lot more than that.
No, if we can do it internally, it's better.
How many copies did you need? I'm sorry.
Joe said to deliver three hundred.
Can you have one of the custodians there just to monitor it and as it comes out? You can just send it, can't you just print um from it at the, at a distance? Can't you just add that printer to your, in your self-service and print it from where you're at and somebody picks it up?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Call Alan.
Let us know what you need us to do.
Yep.
All right, just said the, the one with the darker red.
Okay.
What's next on the agenda?
Uh, our very last superintendent report.
Oh, no, we're gonna get more of that, just not from.
From interns. Let me finish my sentence, David. Interim superintendent Julie Kukinberger.
So I don't really have a report tonight. Um, it's, you know, this was a tough meeting. It's been a tough buildup. I'm feeling actually extremely, just emotionally drained at what the last three months has been to our kids and to our community and to our staff and to know that we're losing uh twenty-three positions in the district. It's counter to everything we've been working really hard to do. Um, but wanted to thank the school committee. I did send a thank you out to the, the community on Monday, but I didn't include you because I wanted to thank you in Zoom person um for this opportunity. You know, when I chose to leave Scarborough, I wasn't really sure if I still wanted to be a superintendent. And I really was on this journey of self-discovery about what was gonna be next for myself. And this was the only position that I applied for during that transition. And like a nerd, when I walked out of the interview, I said I, to myself out loud, I am a superintendent. And it really affirmed for me, this year really affirmed for me that there's big, important, meaningful work to do in this role as hard as it is and as much time as it takes away from my family and other things I love to do. I um, just, uh, it's, we, we get to save lives every day. We get to shape the future every day. And I so respect people like you um and all of you for your service and what you sacrifice in order to be on the school committee. It's not, it's, it's a thankless job most of the time, much like the superintendency. But um, I have grown so much this year and learned so much about myself and um, the district and politics. And um, just the list goes on. And so I just wanted to publicly thank you for that opportunity and thank you for reminding me about what I, what I love about public education and this crazy job. Jean always says, why do you wanna do this job? So thank you for the privilege and the honor to serve your communities.
So.
We, we thank you.
Right, um, you know, as a segue to the chairs report, I definitely wanted to, you know, start by, you know, thanking you for your year here. Um, I don't know why after we think Scarborough coming here, you would still want to be a superintendent. Um, I'm wondering what, you know, what's really gonna be emotionally, more emotionally scarring for you? And uh, what, what'll cause more therapy sessions in the future? Um, I, I can't thank you enough. This has not been an easy year. Um, and for, I, I actually feel bad for our school community because um, they really didn't get a chance to sort of see you out and about uh, as much as I know you would have liked and I'm sure a lot of them would have liked. Because we had you working, you know, eighty-hour weeks from day one. Um, and you, I, I don't think that I could probably put into words the um, what you did to sort of save this district from, you know, pretty dire straits, more, you know, at, at multiple occasions over this year. You know, uh, unfortunately, I know that this sort of having it have to end this way isn't the way you would have liked to have done it, but I want to thank you for so helping us get through this with dignity and grace. And, you know, really leaving our district in a, a safe, comfortable place where we know we can actually continue to do good work as we transition to Mary Beth. So um, I, I'm very lucky because my niece and nephew are in Melrose, so I still feel that you will still be part of um, you know, my life in that way. And um, and I tell my brother and sister-in-law all the time that just how lucky they are um, in, in getting you over there. You're, you're gonna do great things. I know that. Um, you did great thing for us here. So um, thank you for everything you, you've done for us and it was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Um, Jean, I heard there's a big write-in campaign to try. Um, you know, I, I can't believe it, it's finally coming to an end, serving with you as well. Um, I, I think I speak for everyone who has served on the school committee with you and everyone who has worked with you in various town boards and saying um, you are a vital, vital resource to these communities. I loved and respected working with you every single day. When even when we didn't, you know, agree on things, the conversations I had and the growth that, you know, I had from sort of being with you and things I got to learn from you, um, I can never thank you enough for. I know this job is not easy. Um, and I also know there is no way in heck I would be chair if you had the time to do it. So I thank you for the gavel, even though I'm so ready to give it up at this point. But um, you know, really honestly, thank you. You, you came in to sort of fill a vacant seat um, where I just, I could still distinctly remember how you were in a room full of very qualified people. You just stood out and, and I know, I see Michelle shaking her head that we're like, yes, this is the person that we really wanna work with. And it was the right, right decision then, and you're gonna be truly, truly missed. Um, but you're only right down the street, so we can definitely have beers.
And the, and the Ed Fund could use you.
Right, so.
And the who?
Ed Fund could use you.
On the Hamilton Board of Selectmen every year you live here because it's an election every year.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, well, I appreciate, I appreciate the kind words, David, I really do. It's, it's been a really nice, enjoyable, for the most part, time working with everybody. I learned a lot. A graduate degree in education policy, I never thought I'd be on a school board, cause I didn't think uh, uh, you know, I didn't know what to expect. And so now I get to say that I, I, you know, became a teacher and was a, a parent and was a school committee member, like had that experience. But I enjoyed, you know, I enjoyed the debates for sure. I learned a lot. Um, I hope I contributed. Um, the fight's not over, you know. Hopefully you'll see me, hear me uh in the future. Because, you know, my kids are still in the district. I still think what we're doing is, is the right thing to do. Fighting every day for the resources, the skills, the, the, all the other things that we need in order to improve our kids' education. So uh, you know, applaud you all for continuing. Um, and hopefully, you know, I can help in a fulfilling capacity um after, after the twenty-fifth.
Well, thanks again, Jean. Um, and Ty, I just want to mention, I know you're up for reelection. I, I just wanna thank you for everything that you've done here. I have loved working with you as well. And I actually hope that I still get a chance to do so um come July. You came in at possibly the worst possible time imaginable in the history of this school district. And again, you just did so with dignity and grace in your demeanor. I know really helped a lot of us get through some very, very difficult decisions. Um, so I, again, I'm hoping, I hope I'm working with you again in two weeks. But if not, thank you for your service in this, the community. I know the past, you know, uh, seven or eight months has probably felt like a full three-year term already. Cause I know it has for me. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, thank you as well.
Well, thank you very much. Hopefully I'll see you in a week or two. And um, I, I always, I really appreciate everyone's generosity in, in welcoming me and teaching. And uh, so it's been exciting for me.
Well, thank you all. Um, yeah, this is always sort of a tough time of year as you sort of, as we roll over on the board, but I, I think especially after a night like tonight, you realize why it's also kind of important to, just to um, get some new energy, right? Because this, this can be so draining in, at, at times. And um, you know, I, I know tonight's definitely been a tough night for all of us, so um, you know, thank you for that. So moving on, we have nothing in our consent agenda, so I guess we're right at um, any topics for future meetings. We are not scheduled to meet on the twenty-fourth.
Um, don't have a current, we do have a, if I could, David, sorry.
Yeah.
Can I just say though, the negotiations subcommittee, we do have a meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Hamilton Educators Association on um, four o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
Oh, thanks, Michelle. I'm sorry about that.
No, no problem. No. And can I just bring up a housekeeping before, can interrupt you Julie for a second? Um, Mahala has um asked what we would like to do with the chat um comments. Do we need to add, do, do, do they need to be added to the addendum or an exhibit? Or is it because this is a, is, it's a public, it's a meeting held in public? So do those comments need to be uh recorded?
They need to be included because they have been put out in public. I personally think that we should disable the chat going forward.
Oh, I, I, I think so too.
I agree with that too, but um, the MASC listserv, a couple of school committees came back and said that what they're just to do. the MASC listserv, a couple of school committees came back and said that what they're just doing is attaching the chat to their minutes. And so I think Vinnie gets a report of the chat at the end, so we can just PDF that and stick it with the minutes, right?
I haven't seen that one, but it doesn't mean I haven't got it out.
You only can save the chat, I believe, if you click on these three dots, then it allows down here, like where you would type in a comment, it allows you to save the chat. And so you would have have to do that at the end of the meeting in order for you to have that as a record. Okay, don't believe Zoom.
Automatically does it.
Record, okay.
So is that something Mahala can do? We don't wanna put anything more on Vinnie?
I can click the button.
I mean, it looks like she probably can, because we can all, right?
Saying she can do it, yeah. Awesome, okay, great. Have the chat from the last meeting if, if Mahala doesn't think of it. I'm not sure. Okay, thank you.
Um, so on July first, we'll have a new election, so that will be like the reorganization, but, um,
July first?
Yeah, is that what I said?
So your next.
Oh, yeah, first, I would say, I just completely looked over the first week of July.
Oh, yeah, so July fir-, so Mary Beth, if she's still here, had mentioned to me that she felt like that should be like a calendaring meeting, so that we talk about like, what are the expected deadlines and what reports will we get for, you know, at least the next six months, but maybe the whole year if we're lucky. Um, and Dorothy Presser's available to come, so if we have, you know, a new superintendent, it, there could be some just discussions about, you know, the gray areas, um, working together, those kinds of things.
Wait, what is the? So the election's the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
So that means if we have new people that have to be sworn in.
Yep, they could.
Twenty-six.
Work that out. We can work that out.
Would, would say though, Hamilton, um, if they could go to town hall on their own, like Ty did, because it does, which saved the town money as opposed to having, paying overtime for the.
Right.
Or to come over. So.
We're not.
There's no place to come over anymore.
They're not gonna come over to the.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, so it would just be one of those things where, you know, we would do things a little out of order. We would have people go get sworn in and then we would announce the results and be like, oh, that's the official results, so.
Right. All right. So.
As everybody.
Sure, that is Mary Beth's very first day. Um, and so I didn't know if you felt it was essential to have that meeting on July one, um, or if you wanted to have it on July eighth. I think the unknown is kind of what will happen at town meeting and what will happen at the election. You may or may not need a meeting both July one and July eighth if you have to do and, I mean, I guess, if, 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 if somehow the budget doesn't pass in, in those two events, then would you even go to town meeting? Do you have a new budget at town meeting? And I'm not sure how that works, because it's kind of backwards.
You wouldn't, you would wait until the budget. That's a good question, actually. Is the budget, does the thirty-day clock start when Hamilton votes, or does the thirty-day clock start when Wyndham votes?
I, I would think both towns would have to.
Too, so yeah, I don't think we would have a new budget by.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking about what, how you wanna prioritize it because you'll have to, well, welcome Mary Beth, of course, publicly, officially. You'll have the election results and then you'll have the reorganization and if Dorothy's coming, the school committee training. So that's a pretty full agenda. I don't know that there would be anything to link in terms of exhibits, so I'm just trying to make sure that if you're having the July one meeting, that I'm posting it by Friday, the twenty-sixth, but I don't know that any of those items would have exhibits necessarily.
Dorothy might have something.
Okay.
But that would be it, but I think Dorothy and Mary Beth just need to talk about, like, if we're gonna do a calendaring thing, what does that look like? If we're gonna do a quick, like, you know, don't violate ethics and don't, like, violate the open meeting law and don't be a jerk kind of training, like, we could cover that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, so you wanna keep the July one as scheduled?
Assuming. I wanna talk about town meeting, but I don't know how do people feel?
I, I think we should.
I mean, it's, it's easier, we say it's easier to cancel them than schedule them.
Okay, and, and we can guarantee it's not gonna be four hours.
No.
So.
Oh, God, I hope those are over. But that's, that's, that's up for the next chair.
Four hours, they've been five hours. What are you talking about?
Four hours is fine.
Okay, so.
We had a couple of eight hours with the, uh, with the negotiations committees before.
So thank you for posting that, Julie. That'll be helpful.
Be, before we hang up, can I say to Dr. Kuchenberger and Jean Lee, there are not enough adjectives that I, to come up with. You know, brilliant, thoughtful, uh, deeply knowledgeable, dedicated, uh, professional and full of common sense come to mind right now and I have learned a tremendous amount from both of you and I'm going to miss working with you both deeply, so, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. Can I just say?
Yep, sorry.
Just, just popped into the chat and said maybe the calendar meeting, um, at, at a later meeting, so maybe just a general training with Dorothy on the first. But I'll just put school committee training with Dorothy Presser and then Mary Beth and.
I think she's overestimating the likelihood that we're gonna get more meetings, but we'll see.
The summer meetings, right, so you're gonna see me July first, so that you're gonna see me, uh, September thirteenth.
So, okay, um, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
Dave, you have to put a pager together. I know that was a lot of work and it's, it's actually stuck. It's well, just. Thank you.
Dave, there's just a, like, one or two numbers that need attention. I was gonna go to the high school around ten. Are you around in the morning to fix them, or should I go to the high school later?
Yeah, no, I can, uh, okay, I'm gonna head over and, yeah, I'll head over my laptop and figure it out.
Okay, sounds good.
Or I could do it right now if you told me the numbers too, so.
Maybe I'll, uh, email to you once I get home and wind down for us.
All right, yeah, what, whatever, whatever works best for you, Vinnie.
Yeah.
And Vinnie, do you want to text me when you're, when you have them available, so I can run them over to town hall for you? I'm, I'm around. I'm, I'm gonna be in town all day, so text whenever.
Okay.
Thank you.
This has been a hard meeting, folks. People losing their jobs, students losing services, we losing Dr. Kuchenberger and Jean Lee. This is not a good meeting.
Well, then let's close it. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at nine forty-one.
Second, Michelle Bailey.
Uh, excuse me, Stacy Matternick?
Yes.
Uh, Peter Walczak?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Michelle Bailey?
Yes.
Ty Prima?
Yes.
Jean?
I didn't say no, just for the.
Good boy. And David Palito's a yes. So. All right, guys. Be well. Have a good night.
Hi, everyone.